Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/CC-speakers. To enter the Zoom meeting or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128 and entering webinar ID 92010243107. Any emails received by 4:30 PM today were received directly by the City Council. City Attorney Chopra will make remarks, and then the City Council welcomes public comment on the item listed for closed session. City Attorney Chopra?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will meet in one item in closed session. Item 2.1, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, California Government Code, Section 54957b1, Title, Counsel Appointee, City Manager, and Conference with Labor Negotiators, California Government Code, Section 54957.6a, Agency Designated Representative, Vice Mayor Ramirez, Unrepresentative, please, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk, and Public Employee Appointment, California Government Code, Section 54957b1, Title of Position, City Attorney. That concludes the announcement, and you may ask for public comment now, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the closed session item listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press *9 on your phone, and we'll display a two-minute timer. Right. I am not seeing any raised hands. City Quick Laser, are you seeing any?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So I will close public comment and move on to item two, which is our closed session. The Council will now recess to closed session and will return to this meeting at 6:30 PM for the regular session. All right, everyone, thank you. See the public at 6:30.
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the State of California Executive
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the State of California Executive Order N-29-20, dated March 17, 2020, and the State of California Executive Order N-08-21, dated June 11, 2021. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference, with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/CC-speakers to enter the Zoom meeting, or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128, and entering webinar ID 92010243107. Any emails received by 4:30 PM today were received directly by the City Council. Spanish translation services are available for this meeting. We will now hear from our interpreter.
Buenas noches a todos. ¿Habrá interpretación al español para el resto de esta presentación? Si es que ocupa, por favor, vaya al icono al inferior de su pantalla y escoja interpretación, donde ve un glóbulo y escoja el idioma español. Gracias.
Great, thank you. And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, so now I'd like to move on to item two, which is roll call. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abi Koga.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lieber.
Here.
Councilmember Maticek.
Here.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Kamai.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item three, which is presentations. We will now take public comment for this presentation item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the presentation listed on the agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, or press star nine on your phone. It will display a two-minute timer. Alright, I am not seeing any hands for public comment on presentations, so that means we can move on to item 3.1, which is our National Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. Maria Marroquín, Executive Director of the Day Worker Center of Mountain View, joins us this evening to accept the proclamation. So hopefully, Maria can come over. Perfect. Hi Maria, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. So can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you.
Well, I just want to express my really, really deep gratitude for this recognition, just to honor the contributions of many people who come to this country just to bring the best of themselves, and try to contribute to the betterment of the world. So I'm very aware the responsibilities that people like came before, brought to our community. And also, I'm aware and fully committed to left a good legacy to the people who will come after us. So thank you so much, dear mayor and honorable council members too, for this recognition and for allowing me to be the recipients of this great honor. I just want to take this opportunity also to invite you to celebrate our 25th anniversary to the Day Worker Center as organization that really embodies the best of the community, and prominently Hispanic Latino community. So I hope you can join us this Sunday, October 3, from 1 to 5, to the Cebit Plaza here in our Zócalo, the downtown of Mountain View. Thank you again, and I hope to see you all there.
Great, thank you Maria. So I'm just gonna read the proclamation, which states, "Whereas in 1968, President Lyndon B. Johnson first introduced Hispanic Heritage Week to recognize and celebrate the independence of our neighbors in Central America and Mexico. And whereas 20 years later, President Ronald Reagan expanded the recognition period from one week to one month, beginning September 15 through October 15. And whereas the Hispanic and Latino communities in Mountain View, who call our city home and help Mountain View thrive, represent a diverse group with roots throughout Latin America and beyond. And many Latino residents also trace their heritage to the original indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa. Whereas Hispanic and Latino residents have and continue to contribute to the prosperity and culture in Mountain View, the state of California, and our nation. And whereas in recognizing and celebrating the achievements of our Hispanic and Latino community, we honor them and recognize all they have helped build in our state and city. They are teachers and business owners, scientists and soldiers, farmworkers and first responders, artists and activists, and colleagues and friends. Whereas the Hispanic and Latino communities make incalculable contributions to our neighborhoods and community in every sector of the economy. And we are a greater and more vibrant city because of them. Now therefore, I, Ellen Kamai, mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15 to be National Hispanic Heritage Month." So we'll just do a little virtual clap for that. And then Maria, thank you for your remarks earlier. And I also wanted to share, and maybe you want to share a little bit, but in our city hall rotunda, there also is a display from the Day Worker Center. Maybe you want to share a little bit about your display?
Oh yeah, thank you, mayor. Definitely. This is Travel and Stitches. This is an exhibit of the eight wheels that was made from the day labors. And it's a remarkably project that was made, of course, with emphasizing the interchange of experiences. And that happened meantime, and they was learning English. So that was something really unique and beautiful. And as all of you knows, people goes to the center looking for work. And they shared that meantime, they was sewing these wheels. They totally forget what they was waiting for work. And sometimes when we called them because the job was waiting, they really, really don't want to go to work because they were so amazed just sharing and feeling these deep connections with the roots, and also with the coworkers. So there is also some pictures about the people who made it. And it's also very interesting that typically, men are not good with sewing. And as you know, the workers, great majority of them are men. Well, and nevertheless, they was really eager to contribute with the talents. And they learned many things, how to express their feelings. So I really invite you to visit and thank you so much for allowing me to explain this, mayor, because I am so full of emotion and I forget about this important part of our celebration. Thank you so much.
Of course. Great, thank you. And would any member of council like to say a few words? Alright, I am not seeing any hands. Thank you so much, Maria. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, well, we'll move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. As a reminder, the purpose of the consent calendar is for the council to efficiently and quickly consider a high volume of routine or administrative business items with one motion. Although council members may remove items, it is generally not intended for the council to have a lengthy substantive discussion on consent calendar items. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Councilmember Maticek.
Thank you. I would like to pull item 4.5 for discussion. And I also want to register a no vote on 4.2 at this time. Thank you. But I don't need to pull 4.2.
Great, thank you. So that is a no vote on 4.2 and a pull for 4.5. Any other council members like to pull an item? Alright. I will now, to get public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on any item on the consent calendar? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, or press star nine on your phone, and we will display a two-minute timer. Right, and I do see a hand. I'm just waiting on the timer. Hi, Mr. England, hold on just a second. I think we're waiting on the timer unless...
I'm holding. I'll finish my ice cream meanwhile.
We're all jealous. So we'll do...
Two seconds.
Great. Alright, Mr. England, it's all you.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, on 4.5, which is the work plans, I believe. I just wanted to ask for a minor change. This is something I brought up at the PSAB meeting, so this won't be new for them. But one of their work plan items is explore alternative responses to persons experiencing mental health crises. I'd like to request a minor tweak there, which expands that item just slightly to explore existing and alternative responses to persons experiencing mental health crisis. I got a pretty much a positive response from the members of the board at the time, but it was so recent that it didn't make it into the work plans that you see in your packet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Alright, so I think that concludes public comment. I don't see any other hands raised. So I'll bring it back to, bring it back to council for action. And note that a motion to approve the consent calendar should include reading the titles of the ordinances attached to item 4.2, and the resolutions attached to item 4.3 and 4.4. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, mayor. I was really hoping not to have to do this, but okay. I'll go ahead and move the balance of the consent calendar, including 4.2, adopt an ordinance of the City of Mountain View enacting mobile home rent stabilization, and adopt an urgency ordinance of the City of Mountain View protecting mobile home residents from eviction until the ordinance enacting mobile home rent stabilization becomes effective. 4.3, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View amending Exhibit A to City Council Policy A-10, Authorization to Execute City Contracts and Agreements and Increase Certain Limited Appropriations. And 4.4, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View making findings pursuant to AB 361 to continue virtual public meetings for the City Council and City Boards, Commissions, and Committees during the COVID-19 state of emergency.
Great, thank you Vice Mayor for taking on that reading. Councilmember Hicks.
I second.
Great, thank you. That's a real heavy lift by Vice Mayor. Alright, so we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Hicks. We'll do a roll call vote by the city clerk.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Abi Koga.
Aye.
Councilmember Lieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Maticek.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shawalter.
Yes.
And Mayor Kamai.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And that included Councilmember Maticek's no vote on 4.2. So we'll move back to the item that was pulled, which was 4.5. Councilmember Maticek.
Thank you. So, you know, I really appreciate all the work that our advisory bodies do. Some of them have some ambitious work plans. And I want to be very sensitive to the fact that, you know, really, the work plans involve quite a bit of staff support for most of the items. So in looking at these, I was a little bit concerned about the work plan for the Human Relations Commission. And actually, I have, if there's someone who could provide clarification, I actually realized I have another question about the proposed work plan. And on page 12, item B, when it says respond to referrals or inquiries, does that mean if you already have done the work and you're just responding saying, you know, this is what we found out, or this is what we know, or something, as opposed to you're taking on another project? If that could be clarified for me?
Good evening, Councilmember Maticek. This is Audrey Seymour-Ramberg, Assistant City Manager, Chief Operating Officer, and Staff Liaison, along with Christina Gilmore, to the Human Relations Commission. And that item is to allow for referrals that may come from the council, or for example, the council subcommittee like the Race Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, to ask the HRC to take on a new work plan item. And the scope of that could be something minor or major, depending on what was being asked. For example, the REI Committee at its last meeting, when it was discussing Asian Pacific Islander sentiment in the community and discrimination, did ask that the HRC assist in promoting bystander training. So that's an example of something that was referred to the commission.
Okay, so this also says referrals from other city advisory bodies, which I think from my perspective is different than a council committee.
That's correct. I think that's been a longstanding item in the work plan. I don't believe that that's new. And in my experience, in the last five years, there have been none of those. But there are sometimes items of mutual interest where a member of a commission may come to the HRC to present on something, or vice versa, an HRC member may go to another commission.
Okay. And thank you. And let's see. Also, on page 13, item 1, conduct homeless storytelling. And then it talks about potentially having this culminating in a civility roundtable. And could you tell me a little bit more about the homeless storytelling? And like, how that would be used or shared?
Certainly. In the current, or the previous fiscal year work plan, there was an item around safe parking to assist with the identification of locations for safe parking. And that work was not, did not result in additional locations, but it did transition into the other part of that task, which was to, you know, assist with raising awareness within the community about the needs of folks who are using safe parking in our city. And so there were, that Subcommittee did a number of interviews of residents in the safe parking programs, and wrote short vignettes about the stories that these folks had to tell about their families and their work, and how they viewed the safe parking as their current housing. And those are going to be put on the website, and can otherwise be used by staff as staff sees fit in communicating about our strategies to address unstable housing by the city. I think the HRC's intent with this new item for the current fiscal year is to expand that beyond folks who are living in safe parking to other types of folks who are unstably housed. And possibly to have those folks speaking live about their experience through some kind of CRT. again, to provide some awareness within the community about that population.
Okay, great, thank you. And so I guess, you know, in looking at this and given it's the city manager's office that we know has a lot of work on their plate. I guess I would say that, I'd like to say that we have two civility roundtables, especially given the fact that they might be virtual, since we don't really know what's going to happen. And as well as the bystander training. I personally think the bystander training is really important. I'm glad to see it on the work plan. But I guess I'd like to say we do two civility roundtables instead of potentially three.
Councilmember Madashek, is that a question to staff? I see colleagues raising their hand, or is that an item for discussion?
I think it's an item for discussion among the council members.
Okay, well, then I'm going to turn it over to those who have their hands raised, if you don't mind. Perfect. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree with Councilmember Madashek that many of our advisory bodies are very ambitious, as is the council and I think the community at large. I have a slightly different perspective, though. I feel like I, there are, there are a couple of things that I think we might want to be cognizant of as we continue this work. The first two proposals I think are particularly important, and I think the third one has a lot of utility as well in helping us meet, this is kind of a sleeper issue that, that I'm really hoping we, we talk about pretty soon, but that under some of recent state laws, the housing element process is much more robust than it ever has been. And there are some very stringent requirements about documenting and showing that we're making a good faith effort to reach out to communities that historically haven't been involved in the development of the housing element. And I think what, what I would be comfortable saying is prioritizing the first two, so that would be the, the homeless storytelling and the color of law discussion above the third one, the racial reconciliation item, unless the racial reconciliation discussion includes a pretty strong nexus to housing, in which case I think that also can serve as a, as a means to help the city demonstrate that we've made a good faith effort to reach out to historically underrepresented communities in the, in the, in the housing development process. So I, I would like to see the three retained because I think it, it actually helps us achieve some other goals that we hopefully will talk about very soon. I'm expecting the housing element process to be much more challenging than it ever has been. But I do think you've made a good point in work, ongoing work item B. I, I would agree. I don't think it's appropriate for other advisory bodies to make referrals to the HRC. So clarifying that, I think it's really the intent of the council that we allow, you know, council, the full council and then council subcommittees to make referrals and remove the reference to non-council bodies. And then one other thing completely unrelated to this. I, I, one of the things that I noticed was missing in the PSAB work plan was any reference to the MVPD budget. And I don't think we need to spend a great deal of time on this, but because, because it comes up like clockwork every year, I do think a presentation on what's in the PD budget would be appropriate. And I don't expect any work on that other than just an effort to help educate the PSAB and the community, ideally before we start doing the budget work, so that way people could come in with an understanding of how it works before they come to the council and make many requests. But all, I won't request that we include it unless there's council support for that idea. So that's my, my input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on to Councilmember Lieber, did staff want to respond to some of the items that were raised by the Vice Mayor?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor Kamay. If I can address just staff's feedback on the HRC work plan. So in terms of just timing between now, fall of 2021, and spring of 2022, to do three civility roundtables in that timeframe is extremely ambitious, particularly given the workload in the city manager's office right now. So I do think that staff, although of course, we will do three if that is what council wants to do, it is preferred to do two roundtables. So I just wanted to provide that context just with the workload perspective.
Great, thank you. Appreciate staff's perspective. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm normally an aggressive pruner in terms of the, the workload and the activities that, that get added. But I do feel that time after time, I hear from community members that the civility roundtables are some of the most valuable activities that they can access. And I know that in terms of the homelessness civility roundtable, that the bulk of, of the work, as I, as I understand it, and I appreciate hearing from staff, the bulk of the work for that has already been done. I do really want to concur with the Vice Mayor's observation that we get frequent requests for more discussion of the policing budget overall. And so I would like to see us add that item. But I am comfortable with what has been presented to us. So I would be comfortable in moving that we approved the council advisory body work plans for fiscal year 2021 to 22 with the addition of the overall police budget going to the PSAB as an issue.
Councilmember Shawalter.
Yeah, Councilmember Lieber, would it be all right to have a friendly amendment to add the language that Bruce England mentioned? I also queried some of the members of the PSAB and that came up. So I think adding that phrase about exploring existing and, and alternatives with respect to the mental health would be good to add.
Certainly, I would, I would like to entertain that. I, I can't say that I understood the distinction coming from Mr. England, but I, in, in the spirit of comedy, I will accept your friendly amendment.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that I, just before we go to Councilmember Madashek, I just, it sounded like there was a motion on the floor, and so I just want to acknowledge it. So it sounded like Councilmember Lieber was moving forward, keeping the three civility roundtables that are in the HRC work plan. For PSAB, we would be adding in the alternatives to our mental health alternative language. And then we would also have maybe a, I'll call it a Police Department Finance 101 recommendation for PSAB. That's what I heard. Okay, I see a nodding head. Okay. Councilmember Madashek.
Thanks. Well, then I'll make a substitute motion that we modify the language on page 12 and item B. And so the HRC would only get referrals from the city council or from a council committee. And that the HRC can hold two CRTs this fiscal year. And I would leave it up to them to decide which ones they would want to do. And I, I do watch the PSAB meetings and I agree with Mr. England's comment that when you're looking at alternative health models, looking at the current existing model is also a good idea. So I would add that. And, you know, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor about the police budget, having the PSAB look at that. I guess I would say if it's easy for staff to do that, I don't want to have another very large work plan item for staff. And so I guess I would say, you know, if it's easy, okay, they could provide that information to the PSAB, have a presentation on it. And that's it.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, so we now have a substitute motion which would include change language on page 12, item 2 of the HRC work plan, that referrals would come from a council committee or city council direction. And they would have two civility roundtables or CRTs this fiscal year, so between now and May. And then there was also an inclusion of for PSAB, looking at current existing models and for PSAB to look at the police budget as, I guess, staff capacity allows. That's what I'm hearing for the substitute motion. Okay, Councilmember Hicks.
So between now and May seems fairly soon, so I would be willing to second this substitute motion because I feel that next year they'll be doing the, the, what would be the third roundtable this year.
Okay, so Councilmember Madashek's substitute motion was seconded by Councilmember Hicks. All right, City Attorney Chopra.
Just a quick note, since there were substantive revisions to this item, I would just recommend asking for public comment if there is any on those four revised topics.
Okay. Well, let me just make sure that there's no more council discussion on that item first. Okay. Is there any other council discussion? Okay. The City Attorney, oh, okay. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'll, I'll try and be brief. I, I, I'm really struggling only because I, I think that the three concepts that are described in the work plan and the, the HRC work plan are important, and I do think that they have potentially some value in the context of the, the outreach component of the housing element. So I would, I would support it if we could include the third item and just say, if there's time, appreciating that there are some staff impacts. But if, if that's not included, that's fine. I, I will probably support the underlying motion. Thank you.
So to clarify, Vice Mayor, are you asking, is that a, an amendment request or is, are you just? I just want to be clear.
I, I don't want to strong-arm anybody. I, I think if there are the votes to approve the substitute motion, then that's fine. But if, if there aren't, then, that, that, I just want to explain my rationale for, for not supporting this motion unless it is amended.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I think that we're just talking at this point about, you know, timing and if that third one, I don't want to, I don't want to like force or prescribe it or say dictate that it has to be done by June 30th of 2022. So if there's some way to allow for flexibility or just to say if it doesn't happen in this fiscal year, it becomes a priority for, and remains on the work plan or is on the work plan for the following fiscal year. You know, I, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure that it doesn't go away. That would be preferable, but I, I am mindful of the staff time, resources issues. So I would, would go with the two, but if we can just, you know, be a little bit more flexible and say, let's try to include the third if we can, and if not, make sure it happens in the following fiscal year. That'd be great. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Madashek.
I have a slightly different take on that. I'm, I'm happy to say, or to amend the motion to say that the third one is a priority, but I, I would say, but it needs to happen next fiscal year, but it remains on the work plan for next fiscal year, which really could be a matter of months. It's not like it's years. Thanks.
Okay, I'll go with that. Okay, so it, it seems like Councilmember Madashek amended her own motion and it was seconded by the secondar. So just to, I guess, recap that, then it would be an, an amendment to the HRC work plan, which would include that referrals come from council committees or city council direction, that two civility roundtables will happen this fiscal year with a third one that would happen next fiscal year, that the PSAB would look at the police budget as staff time allows, and that would also include looking at current existing models for mental health services. Did I miss anything? All right, so City Attorney Chopra has advised us to take public comment on this item, given the changes, so I will do so. I'll now turn to public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your, not on your phone, and we'll display a two-minute timer. All right, I am not seeing any hands raised, so I will bring item 4.5 back to council for a roll call vote. City Clerk, please, sir. Councilmember Madashek.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Abicoga.
Aye.
Councilmember Lieber.
No.
Councilmember Shawalter.
No.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Kamay. Motion carries. Okay, great, thank you. So move on to item 5, which are oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and we will display a three-minute timer. Right, I see a few hands raised, so we'll ask for the three-minute timer to appear on the screen. All right, Emily starts his slop.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor Kamay, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and council members. I'm a decades-long resident of Mountain View, have two kids in the Mountain View Wispin School District, and have been a panel on the Mountain View Mediation Program since 2002. And from May 2016 until July of this year, I was employed with the nonprofit Project Sentinel and closely supported the city in administration of its dispute resolution and rent stabilization programs. I want to speak today, I'm no longer with Project Sentinel, I am now with the city of San Jose as a housing policy and planning administrator and managing our eviction help center. I wanted to urge the council to make staffing of the rent stabilization program and all the staff that might support the mobile home ordinance the utmost priority. I have been with the staff since the very beginning when the CSFRA was passed, when the city was not prepared to implement such a robust law because it was a voter initiative. The people you have, there's only perhaps four now, they do the work of, especially in the last year, probably eight to 10 people, and I am worried about burnout. They were already going above and beyond what would be expected in such a position and how it compares to the rest, to other cities that have similar rent control problems. You have exemplary staff that cannot keep doing the work of 10 people as well as they do. They are the model for the county. I am in meetings with council, I mean, with city government and county officials and other agencies. And time and time again, Mountain View has been the, the leader in how to hold pop-up clinics to do outreach, education, to help reach our community and effectively implement these laws and help people understand them. So I just want to take this opportunity as a Mountain View resident and voter to, to, to plead that staffing, they've gone with open recs for lots of years, they, that their, their staffing They, that their, their staffing has never seemed to have been a priority and they are going to need it more than ever with the mobile home ordinance. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ronit, Brian?
I hope I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Good. Good evening, council. I'm a former colleague of yours. This year I serve as president of the Board of CSA or Community Safety Net. I've come before you to express deep concern about the ending of the state's eviction moratorium this week and its effect on CSA's clients, the most vulnerable members of our community. Throughout the pandemic, the city of Mountain View has been an example to all in support for its residents. Thank you. You helped thousands of Mountain View residents survive the crisis and stay housed and safe. CSA was your partner in this effort and we are proud of our work together. Many landlords also worked hard to help themselves and their renters weather the crisis. Truly a community working together. But now that the state eviction moratorium is ending, I fear that many of our residents will be pushed back into crisis. Financial aid is on the way, but we have found that it is slow to reach those who need it most. And sadly, it may not arrive in time. Legal resources and legal information are being offered and will help, but the need is greater than the available resources. It's easy to imagine a scenario where agencies that offer help and even the courts are swamped and vulnerable people destabilized. I believe, I believe truly that this is an issue of concern to you. I urge you to continue your work to identify all possible ways within the city's power to offer help and support for our most vulnerable residents. And thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Alex Brown?
Hey, I just wanted to agree with Emily and say that San Jose is lucky to have her and she'll be Mr. Project Sentinel. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment. So we can bring it back to council. We'll move on to item six, which is the study session. Our first item is 6.1, Guaranteed Basic Income Pilot. The purpose of this study session is to receive council input on staff recommendations for the design of a guaranteed basic income pilot program. After the staff presentation, the council will answer the following questions in turn. Question one, does council agree with the staff recommendations for goals, design and anticipated outcomes for the GBI pilot program? And question two, does council agree with the staff recommendation to fund the benefits conservation fund and the research end of design evaluation component? Or does council have alternative direction? Assistant to the city manager Kimberly Thomas, economic vitality manager John Lang and management fellow Hersha Ramchandani will present the memo. And I think Ms. Thomas will begin.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and city council members. As noted, Kimberly Thomas, Assistant to the City Manager, presenting along with John Lang and economic vitality manager Hersha Ramchandani, our management fellow is also a part of our team and will be available for questions tonight. As the mayor noted a moment ago, the purpose of the study session tonight is to provide feedback on the recommendations for the design of a guaranteed basic income pilot. Shown on screen here are the areas for the presentation tonight. The city, as noted in some of the public comments this evening, has been at the forefront regionally with its COVID-19 response, including providing robust rent relief to Mountain View renters, grants and microloans to small business owners, safe parking and many additional programs for the most underserved residents of our community. The council approved another $3 million for a series of direct cash initiatives as part of the fiscal year budget for 2122. That's $1 million for the GBI pilot, $1 million for CSA for flexible uses and $1 million for the Mountain View Solidarity Fund that will be discussed later this evening. These three associated but quite distinct initiatives align with the city council's recently adopted strategic roadmap and the Community for All strategy. In addition to the appropriation of funding, the city council also recently adopted in May a resolution committing support for the principles of a basic income program and participation in the mayor's for a guaranteed income initiative or MGI. Each of these initiatives is focused on addressing the needs of the most disadvantaged in our community. This aligns with more than four years of focused work on the community for all, where the city has undertaken many programs, policies and actions. These programs shown on screen support and invest in the most vulnerable in our community and help serve and promote Mountain View's socioeconomic and cultural diversity. The figure above shown on screen shows the city's efforts ranging from the longstanding programs like the multilingual engagement program to the more recent COVID-19 initiatives, relief initiatives. In recent years, basic income has moved from a policy proposal to action with pilots being conducted around the nation and indeed the world, addressing poverty, providing economic stimulus, promoting community building and increasing social mobility and equity. In the last two years, 19 GBI pilot programs across the United States have been launched with another 20 being developed in 2021. GBI programs, as I noted earlier, are not like other financial assistance programs such as the CSA program or the Mountain View Solidarity Program. They are unconditional, unrestricted and include regular payments for a period of time rather than a one-time payment or form of assistance. GBI pilots also typically collect survey and participation data that helps inform the larger policy community aiming to alleviate poverty. Unlike other government assistance that have specific restrictions or requirements, GBI program recipients are empowered to make their own decisions on how to spend the money that's provided in the best way to meet their needs, basic needs, providing dignity and self-determination therein. There is considerable variation in both the design and individuals served by GBI programs. Most programs last between one and two years. Most of the early pilots have been philanthropically privately funded, but there has been an increasing shift over the last year using public funding to address the direct as well as the residual anticipated impacts from the global pandemic. A common element for all of the pilot programs is a robust and independent research component that offers insights, measurement, outcomes and in the, into how the cash assistance is assisting the participants. To share more on this and some background on Mountain View's needs, John Lang, our economic vitality manager, will take the next part of the presentation. John?
Thank you, Kimberly. Implementing a GBI program for Mountain View is anticipated to benefit both participants and the broader community. Early outcomes from nationwide pilots are showing correlations between our basic income programs and their impact on alleviating poverty, creation of social mobility and equity for rest residents. For instance, the Stock and Seeds program found that payments were used for the purchase of food and goods. It helped produce monthly, month-to-month income volatility and it removed barriers to full-time employment. A couple of the city's goals and outcomes are, one, help the most vulnerable residents who are disproportionately affected by a wide-ranging of financial challenges, including the ramifications of COVID-19. Provide financial stability for participants and their families. As Kimberly mentioned, through the proposed research component, contribute to the national knowledge base of basic income programs. A cross-departmental team led by the city manager's office and the Economic Development Division have gathered best practices from other basic income pilots to identify the following timeline. The team worked with the mayor's guaranteed income initiative to identify thought and technical assistance partners, which we'll learn about shortly, to help frame the city's proposed GBI pilot. Staff have also met with multiple organizations who play roles in the implementation of basic income programs, such as the nonprofit agencies and fiscal payment processors. Information from the most recent U.S. Census Bureau, along with the statistics from Mountain View's Consolidated Plan 2020-2025, shows many residents were struggling, struggling even before the impact of the pandemic. The impacts of the pandemic have exacerbated the struggle. The city of Mountain View uses income limits to establish such programs as the rent relief program. The current income limits for Santa Clara County are outlined in this table. Prior to the pandemic, there were nearly 6,500 households in Mountain View classified as extremely low income. This is denoted by the bottom row of the table. And of those 6,500 households, 1,000 households have a child of 18 years or younger within it. Out of the 16 census tracts that generally represent Mountain View, six census tracts, denoted on the map, identify 20% of their households as extremely low income. So these are the census tracts that have one in five households as extremely low income. In addition, aggregate COVID cases have acutely affected two specific census tracts more so than any other area in this city. And that's Census Track 5094.03, which includes Rangstorf Park and 5095, just to the south of it. The following table actually breaks down those numbers. So it correlates with the map on the prior slide, but this is the numbers behind that analysis. I will now turn the presentation back to Kimberly to finish out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Shown on screen here is a workflow for how GBI works. GBI requires considerations that go beyond typical financial assistance programs. Shown on screen is the flow that highlights the level of complexity to establishing and operating a GBI program. This shows how GBI works from start to finish, including outreach, the applications processes, eligibility determination, research design, the setup of the implementation plan, processes, ongoing administration and evaluation that I've highlighted here. The chart also, for your reference, does include one minor update from the staff report to figure three. We did note that the intake application does usually include some survey components. So that's provided for you there. Program implementation includes key partners to accomplish the various tasks of launching and running a successful pilot. The cross-departmental team that John referenced earlier has researched and developed the pilot. We've engaged with thought partners like MGI, Stanford Basic Income Lab and the Jane Family Institute that are key representatives in this field. We've looked and engaged with researchers such as the University of Pennsylvania Center for Guaranteed Income Research, that was mentioned also by John earlier. We've engaged with nonprofit partners that are needed to assist in the administration of the grants and the program as well as significant outreach to our community. We previewed this with the CBOs that meet monthly. There's also fiscal payment processors that assist in the distribution of the cash monthly to the recipients, including those who are unbanked and those who may have tax or other documentation challenges. Staff also recommends as a part of its plan, lived experience incorporation for the extremely low-income residents of Mountain View to ensure the integrity of the program. Staff's recommendations for the program are shown on screen and I'll summarize them now. Staff recommends a GBI program centered on aiding the extremely low-income residents of Mountain View, families and custodial caregivers with one or more children under the age of 18 at the time of application. As proposed, the GBI pilot would provide participants $500 per month for 12 to 24 months, that's $6,000 per year, serving approximately 166 families. At this point, the council has appropriated funds for the first year of the pilot only. Income eligibility would be set at the 30% of AMI threshold, similar to the majority of residents assisted through the city's rent relief program administered by CSA, where the threshold was set at 80, but 60% of the funding went to 30% of AMI or below residents. This is also in line with the recommendations that will be discussed later associated with the city of Mountain, with the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. That's the next item on the study session. Eligibility would be without regard to status for Mountain View residents only and the participants would need to live within Mountain View through the course of the pilot. The proposed structure of the GBI program is to have payments made as grants paid directly to individuals by a nonprofit administrator to limit the risks that are discussed in the staff report about participants' eligibility for other safety net services being impacted. Those are common benefits that are unfortunately impacted by GBI programs, which include food or rent assistance. GBI could be considered income in certain instances, depending upon what the benefit program rules are. To counter this potential benefit loss, cities have built upon the Stockton program seeds concept of a hold harmless fund. We are calling this, in this case, a benefits conservation fund, but it's a way to assist in any potential benefit impacts for participants who choose to engage in the program. The total estimated cost for staff's full recommendations range between 500,000 and 650,000. Research is a key component of that, depending upon what the estimates are used within the ranges. Staff is estimating, as you see here at the lower end, at that range. When staff returns to the council in November or December with an updated report, we will incorporate the direction received tonight from the council and a funding recommendation will also be included. This concludes staff's report. The staff team would be happy to answer questions, John or Hersha and myself. In addition, we have Cameron Burns, the deputy director of the mayor's for a guaranteed income initiative, attending on the line with us this evening. If you have any questions for MGI, the initiative that the city is already a part of. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. All right, so I will turn it back to the council for council questions. Do any council members have questions for staff or for Cameron with the MGI program? Councilmember Matashek?
Thanks. I sent in a couple of questions about survey results from other pilots. And it sounds like Stockton has published some findings or at least some lessons learned, I guess maybe I'd say. I'm wondering if any of the other pilots have published like hard data on, you know, people's situation has improved by, you know, X percent or so many people were able to have full-time employment or X percent were able to move to, I think it was like a neighborhood where it was better for their children or something like that. So besides Stockton, have any other pilots published anything?
I'll start on that question and then ask also John Lang and potentially Cameron to jump in and add to it if I missed something. The key thing with many of the GBI pilots at this stage is that they are all in process and relatively new. Stockton is one of the larger pilots that we're beginning to get a lot of detail out of. The larger initiative that's being sponsored by MGI to assess the state of California will be one of the next major contributions to understanding what the impacts of GBI are. John, if you'd like to add anything to that, please do.
Other than you're 100% on point, Kimberly, most of the pilots have started up. most of the pilots have started up in 2019 and 2020, and so that there is a lag in the research that's coming out. But we have heard anecdotal from the different pilots that we have engaged with, very similar outcomes. It's not published, but very similar outcomes that are coming out. So the Seeds report came out just this year, and it was the initial findings from the program. There's much more research that will be coming out of it, but it's the first report published from the program which got started in 2018.
And Cameron, I don't know if you would like to add anything to that. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no, for sure. Well, council meetings. The briefest of additions, because the researchers are very intentional with their design of RCTs and making sure that, you know, one dataset in a point of time does not mean for ultimate findings, and they don't want to construe data incorrectly, and so they're very intentional about, you know, analyzing it, you know, with a lot, with at least kind of a year of experience to be able to detect the impact of the guaranteed income over a certain amount of time. But in lieu of being able to provide that analysis, we dig into what we call storytelling cohorts. So as John was mentioning, that politically propulsive sample, that storytelling cohort that is broken out of the recipient pools who are able to anecdotally share out their experiences and help the community at large understand the impact of the guaranteed income. But yeah, the first pilot under MGI was kickstarted in September of 2020, so got a bit of time for findings to come out.
Thank you.
And then for those of us who are not familiar with the acronym RTTs, do you mind defining that for the public? That'd be great. Thanks.
Yes, a randomized controlled trial. So RCT means that you're both able to have a treatment group, which means those are the folks receiving the treatment, a guaranteed income. And you have that treatment group compared to a control group. That control group does not receive the treatment, a guaranteed income, but you're able to, you know, analyze the change, someone receiving a guaranteed income versus someone who is not.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Madaschak, did you have more questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Councilmember Hicks.
So I'm trying to make sure that I fully understand the various line items involved here. So there's $500,000 to $650,000 for administration and study, and then an additional amount for the benefits conservation fund. That would, or is that included in the 500 to 650?
That is included in that estimate of 500 to 650, so it's inclusive of the benefits conservation fund.
I see. And, okay, thank you. And then my second question is, have most cities that are doing this, have they paid for that additional money through their general funds or from some other source, like a foundation, maybe one of the foundations that you named, or some other foundation, and are we exploring doing that?
To date, the bulk of the, not many pilots at the city level, as you know. The lion's share of them are at the county level, and then also facilitated by nonprofits. And so the list that's included just gives you a highlight of that in the staff report for what's happening in the Bay Area. One city locally is doing a pilot, which is the city of South San Francisco, and then the county of Santa Clara is doing a pilot as well. Both of those are using city funding with South SF, I believe, targeting ARPA funding for their project. And then the county, I don't recall the specific funding source, but their project was brought online a little over a year ago, so I don't think it would have anticipated ARPA at that time. And theirs has since been reextended. And then to add...
No, go on.
To answer the additional part of your question about would staff be reaching out for philanthropic donations for this project if it is, if the design is approved? Yes, we would. That would be a part of the effort, both in light of the research, if there's any way to engage on that topic, as well as any potential support for the ongoing program.
And then my last question is, there's the possibility of duplication. You know, people getting money from the CSA, the solidarity fund, and the GBI. Has there been any talk about how to, you know, maybe make sure that that's not happening or making sure that we serve a larger population rather than just the 16% of the very low income? If people are, who are vulnerable, are accessing, you know, for example, each from one of those funds, then you, then you serve a larger proportion of our vulnerable population. Has there been any talk of how to address that?
For the solidarity, Mountain View Solidarity Fund and for GBI, the focus is on that 30% of AMI smaller group. For the CSA funding, that program is more broad and does allow 80% or actually up to 120 of AMI. So that is a much more flexible funding program. And then in terms of administration, it is difficult as the city doesn't, it's not a county and doesn't have a large continuum of care to track safety net services. So in this case, we would have additional administrative burden if we were to add that to each of these programs. We also know, based upon the data and information shared by people serving residents locally in Mountain View, that the need really is great. And so we'd like to do what we can to avail these programs for the members of our community in the 30% of AMI.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Abi Koga.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure who to direct the question to. Actually, may want to hear from Mr. Burns about what's going on in other parts of the country. But I've actually been approached by nonprofits and as well as corporate foundations. There's a lot of excitement around this concept. And so I just was wondering, in terms of opportunities of collaboration, have, and I guess, have you seen different programs that have, you know, joined forces to get the research part done, to frankly, save on resources, ways to collaborate or expand the pool? So there could be, you know, other funds that are brought in. So for instance, the state program, my understanding is for foster youth and pregnant women. And I was thinking, well, if we expand, since we're looking at children, households with children, could that include pregnant women? Yeah, so have you seen those types of collaborations to combine forces and be more efficient with resources, basically?
And just, Councilmember Abi Koga, would you like Cameron Burns from MGI to address that or staff?
Actually, both. Have you seen some, Ms. Thomas, and then?
Yeah, staff is looking at the state program, and then the note that you highlighted about pregnant women, whether that could be a component that might be enabled through potential future legislation on that. So far, for the state funds, it's just the foster youth bill that we've seen some detail on, so that could be a possibility. And then I'll let Cameron share more on that. But one of the major initiatives that really is underway right now is the one that staff recommends to you, which is alignment with the Center for Research, CGIR, through MGI's funded program. And that has allowed participants within the state of California who are implementing pilots to amplify and maximize their resources as well as reducing costs overall, because the costs can be much higher. There is a resource I refer you to, which is the Jane Family Institute Toolkit on GBI. And the cost for implementing and running a program for GBI can be higher. And so that's something that I think is a real positive benefit that is happening currently in the space. But Cameron, you might want to share more about that.
Yeah, I think the beautiful thing about MGI is that we have done our best to, kind of in behind the scenes, with all the kind of infrastructure that we've set up, realize those cost savings. So, you know, with the Stockton demonstration, the research and evaluation component was just under $1.5 million, which was equal to the disbursement amount, which we have brought down significantly with making sure that, you know, parts that were not impactful, we kind of just stripped away. But also because they are doing the work across 25, 30 other cities eventually, that they're able to just literally economize via scale. So no, we have not seen cities kind of cross boundaries beyond, with like actual merging of pilots. I think there was talk of it in Virginia with Richmond and Arlington and a few other counties next to it. But the beautiful thing about the research model that we've set up is that it can be highly tailored to the local context, offering you, you all, Mountain View, local insights to your specific resident. So in terms of the research, it is, it is pretty locally driven, which is an important highlight of the research. But no, I guess, I guess, there will be, of course, a special California focus and cohort with everything that's going on, but not to this state. Has there been specific collaboration?
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. So for staff, I'm just trying to confirm my understanding. And we've obviously gotten a lot of contact about this. So there's an initial $1 million that we have in hand from the federal government, from the one-time ARPA funds. And so we're proposing to use half or slightly half of that to do cash benefits to people in need in the community. And then half or, or greater would go towards research institutions to tell us if we got it things, and also to create the fund to cover any loss of benefits on the part of the individuals who receive the grants. My understanding things roughly right?
Staff would just say, I, in terms of the funding sources, finance based upon what they communicated with the adoption of the budget is still looking at a balance of ways to manage and support the various programs that were funded as a part of the budget. So that is something that is still an open, McCarthy might want to add anything to that. But I didn't fully, I apologize, I didn't follow the, the, all of that, but I think the essence of it was correct in terms of the 1 million out of the 3 million that was provided for cash assistance out of this budget year. That is adopted, and that is for the GBI program. There would be an additional request if the council were to move forward with this project and the program design staff is recommending, to assist with the components you highlighted, which would be the research component, the benefits fund, the nonprofit assistance, and the other items that are included in the staff report.
And so the research, you know, normally, I think that you would always want to do program tracking and auditing and that kind of thing. But to my mind, reading the staff report, it had a good amount of sticker shock around how expensive it is to give out free money. And I wonder, like, am, how much of that is sort of discretionary where we could not, we could decide to turn some of the research into cash payments to help actual people? And, and how much is normal auditing that you would want to do on any kind of a program?
I'll offer an answer, and then certainly the rest of the team is happy to join to that. Because GBI is not simply a financial assistance program, it does have this additional research component and being a part of the larger conversation in poverty alleviation. So it is distinct and different from the financial assistance program that we talked about for CSA or the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. So it does have that component that has some costs associated with it. And then as Cameron highlighted earlier, the costs actually for Stockton, for example, were nearly as much as the pilot itself. So there are, the costs are way down for cities that are participating at this time. But it is one of the hallmarks that sets a GBI project out from other forms of cash out the door, if you will, as you highlighted. Those would be distinct and different where there is already existing infrastructure within a nonprofit or an entity that we would be working with.
And so for this pilot, we would be using our staff, our city staff, to do the distribution? Or we would have a nonprofit or the county as a partner to help in handing out money?
We recommend that we partner with a nonprofit so that it's considered to be a grant fund. We've had some early dialogue with some of our local nonprofits serving families, including CSA and the YMCA. But we would anticipate that a nonprofit would be a better service provider to provide that gift to the families than the cities. The county, for its aged-out foster youth program serving 72 individuals, does administer their own program directly and issues their own tax documents for that program.
Okay, and I am very much interested in the county program. I noticed that it's, it's 72 youth, and there's a much larger pool of transition-age youth or youth who have already transitioned. And so I'd be very interested in what the county's lessons learned are. And I wonder if you've seen anything that they've published yet in terms of that?
Staff has not seen anything that they've published yet, but we have met with the program administrator and had a really productive conversation a number of months back when we were first looking at GBI. Their program has been very successful for that population. The county is very synced up with the aged-out foster youth programs, because of course they administer the infrastructure surrounding that. And they've been very pleased, based upon what I've heard anecdotally with the program. I also understand, but I have not read the staff report myself, that they did receive additional funding to continue that program. That is a larger program in the sense that it's providing $1,000 per month to the aged-out foster youth. And again, 72 was the number that I, I had in my data that they were serving.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, not seeing any. I will now move to public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll display a two-minute timer on the screen. All right, I see some hands. So just wait for the timer. Great, Bruce Carney.
Thank you very much. My first job out of college was working as a research assistant on the largest study of the negative income tax, which was what we called guaranteed basic income 40 years ago. That program distributed $600 million to recipients. In today's dollars, it had 5,000 enrollees, was run out of Stanford Research Institute. There were 30 staff, many PhDs, many analysts and assistants like myself. The report has a lot of relevance to today's needs. You can find it at tinyurl.com/simdime. One of the things they found is that grants do, in fact, lower the amount of labor force participation, not surprisingly, because most poor people who work terribly long hours and giving them money allows them to cut back a little and spend more time with their families. Another thing they found is that when people transform their lives, it takes time. If they get their GED, if they go back and get an AA degree or go to college, it takes time to achieve that. So short-term programs don't really give people the time they need to change their lives. I would recommend that your pilot be a three- I would recommend that your pilot be a three-year pilot or more. One of the most important points is that almost all of us have moved to take advantage of educational opportunities or job opportunities. And the program design element that says you must continue to live in Mountain View for the duration of your participation is a very bad design idea. And I encourage you to strike that out and let people go where they need to go to find their opportunity and additional training. This is a huge problem. I'm glad the city is thinking about doing something, but what would be the outcome of a successful pilot? Are you prepared to fund this in perpetuity or not? Thank you.
Thank you. Leland Anders?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leland Anders, and I'm here tonight representing Nova Works, the workforce board for Northern Santa Clara County and San Mateo County. We applaud the city of Mountain View's commitment to tackle longstanding inequities which have been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. We believe that guaranteed basic income will give unskilled workers the financial security to invest their time into skills training for quality jobs, permanently changing the economic viability of their families. Guaranteed basic income increases a family's financial stability and reduces debt, leading to greater emotional health and ability to pursue opportunities to live at one's potential. This project can be leveraged with Nova Works Employment and Job Training Program to assist unemployed and underemployed workers and will support Mountain View and partner in any way we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Steve Chessen?
Thank you, Steve Chessen, and I'm a resident of Mountain View. And I like the, I'm glad that the council is considering doing this. I urge them to, to do this. My only concern is that the people who would most benefit from this may have a hard time finding out that this program even exists. And I think it's extremely important that you really concentrate on outreach and have your partners concentrate on outreach to reach families that are so distressed that they don't even have the time to even think about getting themselves involved with such a program. I understand that a lot of, I don't know if this applies to Mountain View, but I understand that nationally, a lot of the problems with the rental relief funds is that people don't even know that they are eligible to apply for it. So I think it's very incumbent upon the city of Mountain View to do all necessary outreach to get families involved in this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, I am not seeing any more hands, so I'm going to bring this back to the council. So if there are decision points, we can take straw, straw polls in order to provide feedback to staff. But I'd really appreciate if council members could answer the two questions at the same time. So, you know, question one is, does the council agree with the staff recommendation for goals design and anticipated outcomes for the GBI pilot program? And then there's question two, does council agree with the staff recommendation to fund the Benefits Conservation Fund and the Research Design and Evaluation Component? Or does council have alternative direction? So I will ask if there's any council members who would like to start answering those two questions. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead and start. Thank you to staff for all of the really hard work that you've put in over the last several months, since I believe we moved, decided to move forward in May. It's, you know, it's quite a bit of work that's been done in four months, and I really, really appreciate it. I do support staff's recommendations. I think it's very well thought out. And I've been doing my own research, as mentioned earlier, since we announced that we were going to be engaging in a pilot program. Received quite a few folks reaching out with interest and partnering and so forth. And so I've been able to learn more about the program. And, and I, I agree that it is very distinct from the other programs we've had. And the key to it for me is really that the sustained in, income, added income over a year. I appreciate Mr. Carney's comments. My, my hope is that we could do at least two years with the second half of the ARPA funds that will, we should be receiving next year. But, you know, I, I think in, just to get things going, we, we agreed on the one million. So, you know, I was supportive of that. But the, my, my feeling really is that it probably would take more than a year to get, you know, to see results and also to be more, to really be able to provide impactful assistance. And as I think Mr. Burns might have mentioned, you know, I see the, what I've read, and yes, they're probably still anecdotal, but like in one program, I've heard twenty-five percent of the participants have been able to move out of poverty. I think the key here is the predictable, predictable income, you know, monthly income over a certain amount of time, which provides that opportunity to, as mentioned, you know, take GED classes or take college classes or, you know, get, get childcare. So folk, folks can do those types of enrichment activities to better their lives and to, to socially be more mobile. And so I, I, I think that's the goal, the overall goal. You know, what's the long-term goal for me? And this is, it ties to, I think, the second question. I do support the, the, the elements of the administration and the research design. I actually believe the research is key to all of this, the data collection. Because, you know, we have a lot of assistance programs already. And what I'm really looking for with this is to see, collect data to see how we can change, change the way we do things to, we're talking about reimagining. And that's for, for me, what this is about. You know, I, I think, I think most people know that our welfare system is not the greatest. There's a lot of bureaucracy when it comes to, you know, assisting folks. And this is, this program, I think, is an attempt to try to do things a different way. That's more efficient, hopefully, more direct and, and longer lasting. And, and so, you know, what I see in my conversations with others in this arena right now is the hope that within three to five years, we see good results that we can then advocate for to, you know, change real larger, frankly, larger policies at the state and national level to change the way we, we provide assistance to our low-income individuals and families. So it is important for me to be a part of that larger conversation at this point in time, having come out of, or we're still in COVID. But given everything we did last year, you know, I'm so proud of what we've done because we've done things differently than other places. And we have led a lot of conversations. And I think this is another one that we, we need to continue to be a part of. And I'd like for us to lead in. So I do support that. I, I know, I know for folks, it might be a hard pill to swallow the extra funding. But what I would, you know, like to propose is that we do aggressively pursue grants from philanthropic organizations or corporations. I've again had some initial conversations with potential grant, grant funders. And frankly, their interest is in the data collection piece. And without that, I don't think we would be able to get outside funding, to be frank. And so I really believe that that's a critical component of this. And so I would ask for support of the entire package as staff has laid out. And thank you again to staff for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Schalter?
Yeah, I'd like to echo a lot of the things that councilmember Abi Koga said. I do think that this is a, an opportunity for us to really contribute knowledge of how to better support people and move people out of poverty. As a country, we spend a tremendous amount of money on welfare, and the outcomes aren't always what we want. So this is, this is something that, as a lot of speculation and theorizing has been done for many years in the academic world. And there've been some pilots, and they've been quite positive. But it's time, I think, to have sort of a, enough of these pilots so that the body of information that's available can be used to design bigger, either statewide or federal projects, or lots of little, you know, city ones that can go on for many years. And so with that, I'd like to say I wholeheartedly support the goals and the design. I think that's excellent. I am having sticker shock with the, the cost of all the analysis. I know that when I was in graduate school, I was taught that you should, for a big project, you should always have at least ten percent for monitoring. Well, that's a hundred thousand. So then we have two hundred and fifty for the, the, the fund, the benefit fund, that gets you to three fifty. That's still quite shy of the five hundred to six fifty. So I, I'm having a little problem with that. But at the same time, I do think that this is something that the local philanthropic community would be interested in assisting us with. And I would like us to direct staff to aggressively pursue that, that philanthropic support. But, so, so basically, I'm very much for, agree on number one. And number two, I, I don't, I disagree, I mean, I agree with the research design, but I would hope we could find funding from the local philanthropic community for at least a, a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schalter. Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I am very much supportive, obviously, of the overall thrust of this. And I, I think just helping individuals with resources is, is what's needed. And I, I don't know if it was our staff or Mr. Burns that talked about, you know, individuals being able to spend more time on personal development and job development and investing time in their families. But I, I think that all those things help to get people to the next step. I would like us to really be in communication with the counties that have a program, more so than the local cities that are just starting up. Because I think that the counties are the real experts in benefit loss and those kinds of issues. And the, the different pools of people who have high potential and high, high promise and just need the resources, they are very much in touch with that. I do like the transitional youth kind of concept or focusing on families with children. And I know that from looking at the county's work in terms of safety net, to the extent that communities of need are in North County, they are in Mountain View. So I think that we have the potential for a really good nexus there. I, I think that it's ethically necessary to have the Benefits Conservation Fund because I know that in certain circumstances, a really small amount of additional money can knock people out of Medi-Cal and, and other programs. And so that's something that we have to really take those steps to not have unintended consequences. And I think that's what makes it so important to be working with the nonprofit partners and ideally the county to make sure that as, as we try to do good things, that we do it in a way that there isn't an unintended consequence.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to hear support. So I won't spend too much time providing my input. In short, I support the staff recommendation. So that would be in response to both questions. I did want to share some thoughts on some of the, of the concerns and issues that have come up. First, because, as long as we're targeting extremely low income, I personally don't have a problem if a household participates in potentially all three of the assistance programs that we've created. One-time financial assistance can only take you so far. And especially in a community like Mountain View, one-time assistance might mean one month of rent, right? October first, the eviction moratorium has expired. You'd have to pay the rent. What we are hearing anecdotally in the community is that households don't want to be in debt. And they will take on other, well, in debt to their landlord specifically. They will take on other kinds of debt in order to pay off the rent debt. So I'm personally expecting a fair amount of the CSA financial assistance to helping, to be dedicated to helping folks stay in their homes, you know, at the beginning of October. You know, and the three or four thousand dollars that a household might benefit from might be able to help pay off the, you know, credit card debt or medical expenses or things of that nature. But one-time cash assistance will never serve as an effective poverty alleviation tool. And I think that's the unique contribution that the GBI pilot can address. That's providing people stability over time, an opportunity to help pay for a necessary service, like childcare or whatever it may be, right? I think retaining the flexibility is, is key because people have different needs. And it's difficult for us, I think, to anticipate what all those needs might be. But the higher level point is that it's a unique program that neither the CSA nor Solidarity Fund programs can, or it provides a service that neither of those programs can provide. And I also think that even if one household benefits from all three, it's, it's not going, going to do disservice to the community. It might mean that poverty gets out, oh, sorry, that household gets out of poverty and is in a financially stable place moving forward. And the, I think the other issue I'd like to speak to is who should we focus on? I agree, families, I think, are my personal priority. I'm open to expanding eligibility a little bit if it helps us access state or other sources of funding. So I know the state, for instance, is looking at slightly different, slightly different demographics. I'm comfortable with that, but I do think our highest priority should be families. And to the greatest extent possible, I'd like to help those families that are in precarious housing circumstances. So I think that's pretty much all I have to contribute at this point. I really appreciate the work that staff has done. I know it's, it's kind of a, an idea out of left field, but I think an important one and in line with, I think, the council and the community's objective in spending down our ARPA funds. In my mind, most, if not all of that money, should be spent on helping stabilize the community. Certainly, the city has great financial needs too. But in this case, the one-time funds, I think, should be spent on a one-time use of helping our community get out of a very difficult period, the COVID pandemic. The last thing, I, I, I do think that the research component is, is critical. It is unfortunately expensive, but I'm optimistic, based on the research that has been done, that we could find support from philanthropic organizations or, or maybe a corporate sponsorship. So I'm personally not too concerned that the city will Or maybe a corporate sponsorship. So I'm personally not too concerned that the city will be responsible for that cost. Um I do think it's it's necessary to make the program work as best as we can possibly make it work. So I'm uh I'm supportive of the concept and I do think that uh if it's helpful for staff to include direction to explore. Partnerships that can help, you know, address that that um that cost, I think that's, I'm very happy to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
So I'm I'm definitely supportive of uh rethinking anti-poverty programming. Um and I'm especially glad that Nova spoke up. I think that that's a, that that will be a good connection. In um moving forward with this. I agree with council members who said they would like it to focus on families. I I also like the idea of partnering with the county and foster youth. Um and I, I mean, personally, I would prefer to just give all this money away, particularly given. And not not do the um the studies, particularly given that our eviction moratorium is. Uh expiring and there's great need now. So if any anybody on council can think of ways to move in that direction. To give more money away and give less money to um. Less money for studies and more money for needs, I would, I would really appreciate that, whether it's going to um. You know, going to philanthropic and the philanthropic and corporate community, emerging pilots. You know, what whatever we can do because as uh other uh council members have said, I'm kind of. When I first endorsed the the GBI, voted for it, I didn't know that we were committing to additional money for administration and studies. So if there's any way of reducing that, I would, I would really like that. Another thing I'm a little concerned about is. Um that I personally, I think it's more appropriate for anti-poverty programs to be administered federally. Because the federal government can do deficit spending. I hope in rethinking poverty, we're not just assigning. A welfare function to the cities because we're a relatively well-off city. A lot of cities are not very well-off. Um and so if we're rethinking poverty or anti-poverty programs, that's not the direction I want to move in. So I don't know if there's any, along with the the studying, if there's, and rethinking, if there's um any way of including. That that perspective in the rethinking. I I'll just underline that. I I don't want anti-poverty programming. To be moved to the city level primarily.
Thank you. Councilmember Hic- uh Matta Chek?
Thanks. Um, you know, I really appreciate staff um doing so much research on this and providing us with so much information. It was incredibly interesting and helpful for me. So thank you for that. Um I was interested in exploring this program when it first came up. Uh but now that I feel like there's more information on it, um yeah, I I do have some concerns about it. Um I am concerned that we, we don't have um a whole lot of data. On the effectiveness of these programs. We have anecdotal data that was cited in the staff report and that we talked about here. Um you know, I mentioned some of those um anecdotes earlier. And um, you know, I guess I I feel like I would like more data. Uh before going forward with something like this. Um the other concern I have, as others have mentioned, is the uh cost of this program. It's certainly more than I expected and it seems like a lot. Um and I'm also concerned that the program as proposed doesn't necessarily. Collect the amount of information or data that not only we could use, but others could use to design programs. Uh so actually, I I would prefer at this point to help our community. Um in a a more immediate fashion and to me, that means. More money for existing programs uh that are more cost-effective and that provide more immediate help. Um like CSA. Uh you know, this is a program that would take place over time. Um over a year because we haven't implemented it yet and we still have some work to do on it. And I feel like our community needs help now. So I I don't feel like I'm saying no forever to this. Um but I I actually would like to postpone it for a while. Maybe we look at it um for the next uh funding. And round that we get from the federal government. Um and in the meantime, some more information will be collected from. Other pilots around the US. Um and and actually, we would provide more immediate need to our residents. Uh with a million dollars. So uh I guess you could inter- interpret that as. You know, I'm I'm not in favor of what was proposed. I I'd like to wait. Um and allocate the funding to CSA and other programs that we already have right now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Um thanks, councilmembers. So I've been trying to um keep track of everyone's answers. And so I'll confirm with staff who I'm sure are diligently taking note as well. But I heard um five um in support of the first question. Um and then I heard five in support of the second question with some other recommendations. So I think the biggest part will be um the the funding component and looking to our philanthropic. And uh corporate sponsors, looking at ways would make, that we make sure that we can maybe um work with the county. And collaborate with them on on information as well as um looking into, I think it's um the foster youth component. Um and try as much as possible, I think, to find creative ways to get that that funding. I think I summarized that one. And then I heard a a no and a wait um to allocate the funding to a later time. So that's what I've heard so far. I see your head nodding. Okay, great. Good to know we're the same type of note takers, Ms. Thomas. So um it's my opportunity to be able to weigh in on the two questions. Um and so um the answer for question one will be yes, and the answer for question two is also yes. And I think something that I heard the vice mayor said really resonated which with me, which is. These, the, this is ARP money, American Rescue Plan money, that's allocated to our city to help our residents. And I I I really feel compelled that we need to help our most vulnerable and this will will do just that. Those who are living at thirty percent below the, you know, area median income are. Are, I think, quite honestly, barely surviving in Mountain View. And I think it's really important that we do, that we're creative. That we're innovative and we look towards solutions um to be able to to help them. And um I I don't see this as just um, I I see this as a lifeline. For individuals who may be looking for that. And for those who are truly struggling, it, you know. We, we still are seeing erratic, uh you know, erraticness within the the local economy. We're not seeing the job stability that we thought we might see when the state reopened in June. And so I think the the struggle continues as the pandemic has been going on eighteen-plus months. So um, you know, I really feel feel compelled that this is something that we we need to do and we need to try. I I do think that the city has had to step up and and I hear the concerns about becoming. You know, a quasi-safety net, but I think in a global pandemic during an economic recession, it's an all-hands-on-deck. We have to do everything we can to to support our community and make sure people um thrive. And I think that that's what we've been hearing from the community is how much they they have that need. Um I'm really compelled by the the research component because I really identify with understanding the the data and the metrics. To make sure that we're doing something that is a solution. I am aghast. At 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 the cost of that, but I know that our city staff is always creative on grant opportunities, funding opportunities. Um and I and I feel hopeful or cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to not have to go into city coffers. But rather find those in the community who will be able to step up to help meet that need um because it is so great right now. And those are my comments. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I'm sorry to chime in again, but I did want to um add my support. For expanding the category if that would help with our being able to um partner or obtain the state funding. Or the county foster foster youth or pregnant women, both either are fine with me. Um so yes, I I I want to give some flexibility there. And then to respond to Councilmember Hicks, yes. I don't, uh you know, I don't intend that the the future goal is that cities become the the welfare system. Um what I'm really looking for is that we change the national, you know, the national system. Um it's currently, you know, a very patriarchal system. And I think what we're trying to do is to change that, to give individuals more, um to empower individuals to be able to. Make their own choices and to move out of um poverty. So that's the hope for this program. And yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. So um Ms. Thomas, do you need any other um council direction?
I I think we have it. And let me also do a check-in with the team. If I see heads nodding, I think we're in a good position. And also, of course, with the city manager, I think we are in a in a good position.
Great. And I want to thank uh Mr. Burns for joining us and providing the um mayor's for guaranteed income um perspective as well. I think that's really helpful for all of us. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. And we'll move on to item six point two. Which is the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. The purpose of this study session item is to receive council input on the city's award for funding. To enhance the Mountain View Solidarity Fund program. After the staff presentation, the council will answer the following questions in turn. Number one, does council support staff's recommended parameters for use of city funds to support an enhanced Mountain View Solidarity Fund program? And agreement terms with the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation as the Solidarity Fund's fiscal sponsor. Assistant to the city manager Christina Gilmore will present the staff presentation. And actually, after the staff presentation, we'll go into public comment and then go into um council comments and questions. Apologies for missing that before. Ms. Gilmore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you and we see the presentation. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Um good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Christina Gilmore, Assistant to the City Manager. And um I'm here with uh with you this evening to discuss the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. Apologies, my screen seems to have frozen. There we go. Um so at its June twenty-second meeting, the city council appropriated three million dollars as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one adopted budget. To support three of the program, three programs for direct cash assistance to Mountain View residents. Um you just were um concluded discussing the um guaranteed basic income pilot program, which was. Um a million dollars that was allocated to that program and another another million dollars to CSA. And then finally, um an additional one million dollars to the Mountain View, Mountain View Solidarity Fund, which we'll be speaking about tonight. Each initiative focuses on addressing the needs um of the most vulnerable and disadvantaged in our community. The Mountain View Solidarity Fund program aligns with the council community's community for all priority to protect vulnerable populations. And preserve the socio and economic and cultural diversity. The Mountain View Solidarity Fund um began in the spring of twenty twenty um as an all-volunteer mutual aid fund. The fund began as a direct response to the global COVID nineteen pandemic. And the Santa Clara County Shelter in Place Order that was put in place in March. The fund consists of eight volunteers um who are longstanding Mountain View residents. Um who are informal community leaders involved in parents' parent groups, schools, churches, and community-based organizations here in Mountain View. The volunteers um are Latina and have longstanding ties to the Latino community. The program was designed to ex- address the extreme economic hardship of community members. Build self-determination and power and and demonstrate the community's capacity for community-based participatory grant-making. To date, the Solidarity Fund has raised approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um based on um individual donations as well as grants from other community organizations. And with that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, they've had the opportunity to distribute one-time payments to assist a total of one hundred and ten. Mountain View households. And the Solidarity Fund is also um a fiscal uh. Receives fiscal sponsorship from the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation, which we'll talk about a little bit in the next slide. So as I mentioned just now, the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation um serves as the fiscal sponsor of the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. As a fiscal sponsor, the community foundation serves as a nonprofit incubator. It can assist emerging nonprofits with the fundraising, communications, organizational development, introduction to donors and succession planning. It also can receive donations and acknowledge um donors and and donations on behalf of the project that they are the fiscal sponsor for. And they can also assist with reporting requirements as well as include the project or the program within their tax filing and audits. The Solidarity Fund will continue to um be a project under the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation. At this time, they do not have a timeline for becoming an established nonprofit. Um but the community foundation um is ready to assist them in their growth. So that the Solidarity Fund can focus on um assisting the most needing vulnerable in our community. So beginning in May, staff um has met with the Solidarity Fund representatives total of six times. Uh we have met to um learn more about the Solidarity Fund. As well as to share information about the city and our processes and really to um determine. The the enhanced program parameters with the potential um city and Mountain View one million dollar grant. The meetings um consisted of quite a bit of back and forth between the city and the Solidarity Fund. We utilize simultaneous and in-person translation um to ensure that the Solidarity Fund members. Who are participating in the meetings with the city um had access to um language support. So that way we could communicate and make sure that we were all on the same page. Um the average meeting time um for each of the meetings was about an hour and a half to two hours. So even though there was only six meetings between May and August, um those meetings took up quite a bit of time for both parties. And um there was quite a bit of correspondence back and forth to ensure that um we received clarification. Or additional information for staff, for city staff, for the Solidarity Fund and for the Los Altos Community Foundation. So the proposed program enhancements that staff is bringing to council for your consideration this evening include expanded eligibility. Weekly and monthly reporting and other program enhancements. Under the expanded eligibility. The Solidarity Fund will have the flexibility to grant one-time financial assistance of up to four thousand dollars per household unit. And with that that financial assistance, that it'll go for broad assistance. So um helping family members or individuals pay for bills, rent. Um uh loans, credit cards, medical food, um whatever it is that they need in order to assist them. With their financial hardship. And the um eligibility will include expanded eligibility. To include any extremely low-income family or resident in Mountain View. The additional program enhancements will include weekly reporting as well as a monthly summary of expenditures. So the weekly reporting will um be for, to understand a little bit more about who the Solidarity Fund is serving in Mountain View. So that will include total number of people in our house, in the household, um the number of applications received. Uh who are receiving cash assistance and where that cash assistance is coming from. Um the average amount of funds given from the Solidarity Fund and ensuring that the recipients live in one of the three Mountain Views F codes. And then also income verification, ensuring that the applicants fall within that thirty percent of AMI category. The other two program enhancements that staff is recommending is to have a solidarity fund expand their program outreach to neighborhood groups and CBOs to ensure that all residents in Mountain View are aware of the program and that anyone who was eligible for the program can be assured that they have the information that they can apply for funds. And then at the end of the program funding cycle to assist the city with educating and connect connecting the recipients to other safety net providers and programs to ensure that the the participants are aware of other cash assistance programs or other programs that can help them with their financial concerns. So this slide represents the current applicant outreach and assessment process of the solidarity fund. I won't go into a lot of detail, but as you can see, a request is received by the solidarity fund for assistance. They do a brief interview verification process, which goes into the approval process from the solidarity fund. And then the check request once the request is approved and then the dispersment. The proposed agreement terms that staff is recommending for council consideration will be that the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation will remain as the fiscal sponsor. The solidarity fund will continue to be a project of the the Mountain View Community Foundation. The agreement will be between the city and the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation. The term will cover the period of November first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. The funds will be dispersed in three installments based on performance and adherence to the enhanced program parameters. Administrative fees are not to exceed seven and a half percent or seventy five thousand dollars of the one million dollar appropriations. And that the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation can return unexpendated administrative fees back into the solidarity fund without council approval. So this brings us to staff's recommendation and the council question that staff is asking council for feedback on. And so with that, this ends my presentation and I welcome council comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, we'll stop the screen share for now because we'll go to public comment first before bringing it back to council. So would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press start in on your phone. We'll display a two-minute timer on the screen. All right. Anyone have public comment on this item? Okay. Anthony Chang, and if we could get the two-minute timer, please? Okay. I see Lucila Hernandez now. Hi, Lucila.
See, you have to unmute.
Bueno, si, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Si me escucha, verdad?
Sí, sí.
Oh, si, buenas noches. Yo quiero agradecer por toda la ayuda que nos han brindado en estos tiempos tan difíciles para nosotros. Y agradecer a que han destinado muchos fondos, así sea, y toda la ayuda que han dado. Y sí, agradecemos todo eso. Pero sí necesitaríamos un poquito más de ayuda por lo que ahorita todavía el trabajo está bien limitado. Y aparte todavía tenemos, bueno, en mi caso yo he aplicado para los programas que está la ciudad y así ese y eso. Y aún sigo en esta espera, ¿verdad? Pero sí agradecería que hubiera más fondos para para poder ayudarnos, ¿verdad? Ya que ahorita pues uno está preocupado porque pues deben uno rentas y eso. Y no, no tenemos aún una respuesta de que si vamos a recibir ayuda o no. Y en mi caso pues estamos estresados ya porque como termina la monitore y todo y no sabemos qué pueda pasar. Yo tengo dos niñas, una de catorce años, una de nueve años. La de catorce pues gracias a Dios es una buena estudiante y todo. Y pues lo preocupado ahorita es que que tengamos que desalojar el apartamento eso cuando pues vivimos por varios años aquí en la ciudad de Montevideo. Y es bastante la preocupación de que podamos tener ayuda.
Gracias, muchísimas gracias. Es el tiempo. Gracias.
Gracias.
Then did staff want to translate?
Mayor, I think that the way it's set up right now, we can select English interpretation to the interpreter.
Oh, so council should have selected the English interpreter?
She can interpret now.
Okay, thank you. I don't think council knew that. Thank you.
But you would have to select the English interpretation.
Okay, so I think council members, if you see the little globe and you click on it and you would click on English. Yes. I, yes, I hear you, but I want to make sure. Does councilors, if you give me a thumbs up? I can hear you. Councilmembers, do you hear her? No, okay, thank you. I think some people are still, so you hit, there's like a little globe icon. It's it'll say off and then English or Spanish and then you click English.
Mayor, I'm not seeing that option.
Next to raise hand?
I only have share screen and record.
Sure. Sure. Great, thank you. Right. We have, we have other public comment as well, so I'm going to move on to that. Anthony Chang?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Anthony Chang. I'm a volunteer with the Mountain View Solidarity Fund, supporting the eight Latina women that that lead the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. The Mountain View Solidarity Fund sent an email to, tried to send an email to all the council members and some of them were bounced back in the last day or two, so just wanted to share what was in that email. Said, "Thank you again for your support of Mountain View Solidarity Fund's efforts to both support some of the most vulnerable residents in our community, stabilize their economic situation during this challenging time, and provide an opportunity for solutions to be led by us as a group of working-class Latina immigrant women who understand the needs of our community. We appreciate this vote of confidence in our leadership and work in the community." As the, as you all go into, talk about this, our understanding is that a Dean Miller from the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation will be available to answer questions. We also wanted to share that Paula Perez, Olga Melo, and I also be available to answer questions during the study session in case you are not aware. And finally, for additional context, and I can translate for Paula and for Olga if the interpretation's not working. But lastly, for additional context, as you consider this potential partnership, we also want to share a little about the long-term vision for Mountain View Solidarity Fund. As you already know, Mountain View Solidarity Fund is less a new project and more the latest step in a twenty-year arc of our community leadership and organizing around education, public safety, anti-displacement, affordable housing, and more. And as working-class Latina immigrant community members, we will always strive to be responsive to the needs of our community and work towards our community having a voice and determining solutions to the challenges we face. And as we look forward, we can imagine that our work may evolve to include how we can work together on long-term solutions to housing and displacement and long-term stability, including community ownership of housing. Thank you again for your time today.
Great, thank you. And Anthony, before you go, you said it was Olga, Paula, and yourself? Maybe we lost him. Okay. All right. Well, I think he mentioned three people who are also available. Any, any other public comment on this item? All right. So seeing no further public comment, and I know we're trying to get the vice mayor Zoom updated so he can get his interpretation going, we'll, we'll bring it back to council for comments or questions. And I think at this time, as was noted, a Dean Miller with the newly renamed Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation is also in attendance that we can bring over in case we have any questions for our, the, who will be the fiscal agent for this. Great. So do council members have any questions? I'm not seeing any hands. So if people don't have any questions or comments, then that means we can go right into our decisions. So if, if, if needed, we'll do straw polls in order to provide feedback to staff. But if each of you could respond to the question, there's only one. Does council support staff's recommended parameters for use of city funds to support an enhanced Mountain View Solidarity Fund program? And agreement terms with the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation for the solidarity fund's fiscal sponsor. And Dean, did you have anything you wanted to add before we go into our deliberation?
No, I'm here just available to answer any questions if anybody has that. I can certainly add commentary if that's necessary, but I would prefer you guys actually to have a conversation.
Okay, perfect. And look, I love the new logo already.
Isn't it awesome? Thank you for, the name is fantastic. I love it. As Mountain View resident, I'm just thrilled that we got to this point. So thank you.
Yes, of course. All right. Councilmember Scholter?
Yes, I'm just, Dean, since you're here, I'm just going to ask the direct question. And that's that you are looking forward to working with the solidarity fund as, as their fiscal sponsor.
Absolutely. It's been an absolute pleasure actually to work with him since December of twenty twenty and formalize the relationship at the beginning of this calendar year and to continue the relationship with the volunteer leaders. Anthony and I have been chatting by text even as this conversation is going on. We have a good working relationship and I think that's key, especially in this kind of fiscal sponsorship relationship. We are there to help the project get realized, help it get established, build it, its infrastructure in essence to become a standalone organization if it wants to do that, but really serve the community the best that it can.
Thank you so much and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
Well, if Councilmember Maticek has a question, I thought we were moving into, no, okay. We're, we're in comments now. Then I, then I'll comment. So yes, I support the staff recommendation and I just wanted to add that I'm, I strongly support community-based organizations like this and I'm glad that that this has moved forward to a new level after, as Anthony had said, twenty years of, of organizing. And I really look forward to to further progress in the future, some of the long-term types of projects that Anthony had, had mentioned. This is the kind of anti-poverty program that I'm, that I really strongly support.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
Thanks. I am supportive of the staff recommendation for this program. I appreciate that this program provides immediate help to residents. And I feel like that is what they need right now, given the situation with COVID. I do want to encourage the folks from the solidarity fund to help people apply for rent relief from the state because that would make the one million dollars go further for other needs. So I would really encourage you to help folks apply for that. It's a really beneficial program. So as I said, I am supportive of the staff recommendation. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very supportive of the staff recommendation and I'm very thankful for the, the folks who put the solidarity fund together and are working so hard on it. And it's a great synergy with the community foundation as well. And I, I think it's actually very, a very powerful model to have a group of Latina community members who are so experienced in our community, working together in this way to help families very, very quickly. And so I think that this is a great synergy and I'm one thousand percent supportive.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also want to lend my support to staff's recommendations and thank staff and the members of the solidarity fund as well as the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation for the collaboration. I'm really looking forward to seeing the, again, this is a, another new concept, innovation at its best, I'd say. So I'm looking forward to seeing the, the, the good work being done. I also wanted to just appreciate, express my appreciation for the expansion to all of, all individual families in the thirty percent AMI category. I think seeing the census, our latest census numbers, you know, our demographics are changing and it's becoming more and more diverse. And so I do want to make sure that we are inclusive of everyone who, who is in that AMI category. So I appreciate that expansion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Scholter, I'm marking you as a yes. Is that right?
Very definitely, yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, great. All right, so I, in terms of for, for staff, I've heard six yeses to your question and I'll add my yes as well. And just, I'm really heartened by the community partnership. Not only is it our, our community members, we're also linking up with the community foundation and I love to see this partnership. And I, and I hope that this will perhaps be a model for, for the future too in terms of, you know, being able to cast kind of a wide asness possible to help the, the most people who are in need. And I do agree with Councilmember Abi Koga's comments that by expanding into all folks who are thirty percent AMI or below will be able to help the most amount of people. So and, and just before we go, I just want to agradecer a Olga, Paula, and Anthony for all your hard work. We appreciate it. Okay. So and I think for the vice mayor, the, the public comment we received in Spanish was a big thank you from Lucila. She's grateful for all the help that she's received through the city. She has received some CSA benefits. High points are she has a fourteen-year-old daughter who is doing really well academically. But they feel the stress of the eviction moratorium ending. And so really looking forward to programs like the one at CSA and like this one that might be able to, to help her. So those are the translations that came through. All right, all right, Ms. Gilmore, do you need anything else from us? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate it. So we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearing. Item seven point one is a residential development at nineteen nineteen through nineteen forty-five Gamble Way, five hundred and seventy-four Escola Avenue and nineteen seventy Latham. Would any members like to make any disclosures before we get started? So I think we can do as well. Perhaps if you met with the applicant, you could just, I could do a raised hand. And it looks like Councilwoman Maticek, Councilwoman Scholter, Councilwoman Abi Koga, the Vice Mayor, and myself all met with the applicant. Just noting for staff. Perfect. All right. Senior Planner Margaret Neto will present the report. And then we will have a presentation from Bill Mastin, Principal Architect, and Max Ermalenko, Project Manager with William Mastin, Architect and Associates, Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Archie Shervostova, Planning Manager and Zoning Administrator Stephanie Williams, and Public Works Director Dawn Cameron, as well as the applicant Kevin DiNardi, and the applicant's landscape architect Eric Plato with ANLA Associates are also available for questions. I think we'll believe, I believe we're going to start with the staff report.
Good evening, council members. My name is Margaret Neto. There we go. The project before you tonight is located at 1920 Gamal Way. The project site is located on the west side of Escola Avenue between Mount Burning Court and Latham Street. The site's general plan designation is medium-density residential and the zoning designation is R3-1, multiple-family residential. The multi-property project site includes seven parcels, which you could see here, totaling 2.3 acres and is developed with seven two-story residential buildings containing 29 units. This is the proposed project. The project proposes to redevelop the site with a four-story, 121-unit residential condominium building with one story of underground parking. The purchase and development of Gamal Way, a 50% density bonus under the provisions of the state density bonus law, which allows density above the maximum allowed on the site and also requires replacement of all protected units. This is the elevation of the site from Escola Avenue. The unit mix consists of 21 bedroom units, 89 two-bedroom units, and four three-bedroom units, with units ranging in size from 800 square feet to about 1,400 square feet. The proposed site layout is configured to provide an activated street presence with individual units along Escola Avenue and about a 1,400-square-foot common open space in the middle of the site. Vehicle entrance to the below-grade garage is provided from a 26-wide driveway along the northern property line. And you can see there, there's the driveway in on the right corner. An ingress easement over Gamal Way, project driveway, will allow residents at 1970 Latham Street development to the west to exit Escola Avenue. Additionally, a pedestrian access easement over the sidewalk along the driveway allows for public bike and pedestrian access to replace the access to the public street. The proposed Mediterranean architectural style of development includes smooth stucco style and stone veneer exterior wall finishes and wood and metal architectural features. The applicant has requested the city vacate the existing street and easements known as Gamal Way, which is about 26,000 square feet or 0.59 acres to accommodate the project. And there you can see Gamal Way and the seven parcels that are part of this project. Staff and the developer have reached a tentative agreement on the sale of the vacated land for a purchase price of $4.8 million plus additional tenant relocation assistance benefits pending council approval, and I'll discuss those later on. SB 330, the housing crisis took effect on January 1st, 2020. SB provisions apply to residential projects not deemed to complete before January 1st, 2020. Because the application was deemed complete prior to January 1st, 2020, the project is not required to comply with SB 330. However, comparable replacement requirements for protected units, however, comparable replacement requirements for protected units and relocation benefits are being provided as part of the project to meet the state density bonus requirements. And as part of the deal terms negotiated for the sale of Gamal Way and the enhanced trail benefits are comparable to SB 330. The project is subject to the city's BMR ordinance Phase 1. As part of the BMR ordinance Phase 2 update, council discussed grandfathering projects that had been submitted prior to June 30th, 2019. Some staff, the staff had some concerns about partial applications being forcibly submitted by applicants who wanted to be grandfathered into the BMR Phase 1 ordinance. Council agreed to give applicants time to prepare a comprehensive application by August 24th, 2019. In this case, this project had been submitted, had submitted a comprehensive package on June 24th, 2019, well before August 24th. Therefore, the project was grandfathered and is subject to the requirements of BMR Phase 1. BMR Phase 1 allows a project to choose between provisions of onsite units of 10% or a BMR-in-lu amounting to 3% of the sales price of all the units. Density bonus and waivers by providing 36% of the project's density dwelling units, and that's 24 as affordable to low-income households per state law. This project is entitled to a density increase of 50% over the otherwise maximum allowable residential density. The maximum allowable density on the combined site is 35 dwelling units per acre or 80 units. And the 50% density bonus allows a total of 121 units, which amounts to a density of 52.5 dwelling units per acre. In order to maximize the density, a number of waivers are requested under state density bonus law. They're requesting an FAR increase, setback waivers for the upper floors, a height increase from 45 to 254 feet, an open area reduction from 55% to 49%, and providing state parking requirements, one space per 200, one space per unit plus 20 guest spaces, which exceeds the state law requirement, which is one space per unit. In addition, the state density bonus law has a following replacement requirements, which the project will provide, 29, replace all the units onsite, which amount to 29. Based on tenant income, the project will require nine very low units and 20 very low inconvenience. One tenant remains to be confirmed, at which point the final income levels will be determined by the move-out deadline. If the tenant declines to provide information, the unit will be priced at low income. The sale of Gamal Way, as mentioned above, before a tentative agreement on the sale and purchase of Gamal Way, the price was 4.8 million plus the tenant relocation assistant benefits. Summary of the enhanced benefits, the 42 rent subsidy, the first right of refusal to newly constructed unit at affordable price. The tenant also has a right to occupy their current rental unit six months prior to construction. Tenants who exercise the right of first refusal will also be provided interim relocation at a comparable rent. And also the enhanced BMR, the BMR units are deed restricted in perpetuity. I also want to add, after reviewing recent tenant requests, applicant has agreed to two additional benefits. The first is offering the same options of rental subsidy or comparable units to the tenants who choose not to exercise the right of refusal to purchase a unit. So staff is therefore recommending the following revisions to be reflected in the two documents. The conditions of approval, number 64A, and also the terms for the sale of Gamal Way. Staff would like to note that some of the adjustments in the language in both documents may be required to reflect this intent and requires the council to adopt this in their motion. And the second is to provide a right of first refusal to purchase for the two remaining low-income tenants that did not receive the notice of intent or the NOI to vacate on or before January 3rd, 2020 because they began renting after the NOI was sent. And this is in addition to condition of approval 64B. Staff is therefore recommending the revision to be reflected in the same two documents, the conditions of approval and the terms of the sale agreement. Staff would like to note, again, that some of these addition language would be required to reflect the intent and request of council and adopt this in their motion. Number two, tenant meetings held on August 25th and September 22nd of 2021. There was also a neighborhood outreach meeting held in April 2021. The DRC recommended approval of the project pursuant to revisions on June 2020. These revisions have been made by the applicant and are reflected in the plans. The zoning administrator and subdivision committee reviewed the project on August 25th and recommended approval of the project and the vesting tenant amount subject to conditions. And the recommendations, staff recommends approval of the project with the following changes as highlighted on this slide. That concludes the staff's presentation and the applicant is also here to make a presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So I believe, is it Mr. Mastin who will be making the presentation? Is that right?
I'll be making the presentation. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay. Yep.
Okay, great. Bill Mastin, Principal Architect here in Mountain View did want to allow access to Max in my office, who will be providing some support documents on screen if we can let him on.
Apology. So Max is in the, is it? Are we bringing them over? Let's see. Okay, here we go.
Max, can we share the screen?
There we go.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you very much to the council as well. First, as always, this project could not have happened without staff's continuous input. The complexities of closing Gamal had its own efforts, especially with public works. But from an architectural standpoint, we collaborated with staff that would create a site plan and overall development that maximized outdoor community space primarily through the interior courtyards, which Max will show us here in a moment. If you could take us to the next slide, Max. This overview of the site does show the new driveway configuration along the side of the property, which does also allow pedestrian and bicycle access from behind. We are making use of a significant number of photovoltaic panels, which also are hiding our air conditioning units. Just also wanted to note that the four-story elements are all facing inward towards the central courtyard. And we're providing three-story elements along the perimeters of three sides of the project to help reduce the overall massing of the project. And Max, if you could take us to the next steps. Just one more slide to show the overall view from Escola. And if we could make a couple minor comments about the central courtyard. Things are moving a little fast, excuse me. But to point out that in addition to this courtyard, which is almost 200 feet long and about between 40 to 60 feet wide, we're providing some common community spaces, which include a generous entry with seating areas as well as a community room that also has direct access to the courtyard and outdoor spaces for kids and other people living here. So if we just want to take one last look at the courtyard views, I'll finish this up and be available for questions that you might have. That concludes our brief presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. So I think if the presentation is done, we can stop the screen share. We can bring it back to council. Wonderful. All right. So we'll bring it back to council. Do any members of the council have any questions? For either the, for staff or for the applicant? They're both available. Councilmember Maticek.
Just real quickly, the two changes, can staff run those by me again? I am looking at the presentation that we received right before the meeting, but it looks like that's old and that you updated it. Is that correct? So I can't really refer to that one.
Councilmember, I could answer that question. Yes, we made the changes recently because we just heard right before the meeting from the applicant. And we're working to make these changes. So we'd be happy to share the two slides to to give you more information if that's what you're interested in, or we could just speak to it.
It'd be great if you could just recap them again for me. I would appreciate it.
Okay, the first change is basically offering the same rental options to those who choose not to purchase a unit that are given to those who choose to purchase a unit. So they will, they will get the option of a rental subsidy or the option of a comparable unit in one of their properties. You know, and if it's more expensive, they'll get the difference. And if they choose to leave the unit, they'll get the differential for the balance of the month. So it's basically extending it to those who choose not to purchase a unit. The second is to extend the ability of the first right of refusal for two tenants who started renting after the notice of intent to vacate was sent and weren't eligible for the trail benefits. So the idea is once the first set of tenants gets to pick, if there are still remaining units in the 29 units that have been provided, the remaining two unit tenants also get a chance, they're low-income, and they will have the chance to exercise a first right of refusal. And this is based on the requests from various tenants as well as the tenants' representatives.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
Thank you. Okay, so I think you've answered one of my questions, which was whether the dislocated tenants can move to some of Todd Speaker's properties as well. So the answer to that is previously no, but now yes, I think, if I understood that right. Okay, good. Thanks. And then, do you have any sense of how many current residents are expected to buy? I'm curious because it seems like kind of a heavy lift for low-income people. Is there any sense of that?
No, the move from renting to owning is quite a large step. And even our BMR waitlist, those who are on our waitlist have done the research and prepared for it. So we expect that this process will take quite a while and we do have time until the units are ready. We have our BMR administrators as well as housing staff to sort of help them navigate the process as well as look for options for down payment assistance and other forms of help in addition to just the price of the units. But we don't at this point know how many intend to move forward with that first right of refusal.
Okay. I mean, you haven't had anybody even contact with interest? Okay, I mean, you haven't had anybody even contact with interest?
All the tenants have shown interest. I think it's interest in understanding the process at this point. Yes.
Okay. And um so there's no down payment assistance given, but that would be through some outside agency if I understand right.
Yeah, similar to our current BMR list, we offer units at certain price points. Um, and and folks have to qualify to be able to purchase units at those price points.
And then there's also no uh HOA fund, but the staff report uh outlined how much estimated what would be a good HOA fund if in cases like this. Am I understanding that right?
Yes, we did not include an HOA reserve in the deal terms. Um, it yeah. And um that currently um a project under BMR Phase Two would have been required to provide about seventy-five thousand per unit. And that would amount to about two point one seven five million um for all twenty-nine units. Um, just a quick explanation, the HOA reserve is not money that goes to the tenants. The the price point of the unit incorporates the estimated HOA dues. This is only, this goes to the BMR administrator into a fund where over time, if it goes beyond the expectation, um, we would have to create a process, um, you know, to to disperse the funds and and get applications.
Okay, I didn't know that. Thank you. And then my last question is um for the new water and sewer and so forth, how does that proceed? Does the developer pay for all of that? If there's increased capacity, how does that? You know, with the vacation of the street and then new configuration and expansion of that.
I would ask um Dawn Cameron to respond to it if she's available.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Dawn Cameron, Public Works Director. So yes, in terms of any um removal and abandonment of utility lines in Gamma Way, it will be up to the developer to remove them, reconfigure, uh, take any actions necessary to serve their development.
Their development and the other developments that it used to serve?
Yes, if there, yes, that they would have to ensure that any other developments that might be feeding off of those lines could continue to do so, but I'm not certain if there are any others feeding off of Gamma Way.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Great, thank you. Any other councilmembers have questions? All right, I am not seeing any, so um I'll move it over to public comment. Oh, sorry about that, Councilmember Lieber. Go ahead. Sorry, no problem.
Um, I I just had a question about the the HOA reserve. So my understanding from the staff report is that that would cover um HOA dues in the future.
Uh, it the HOA dues are typically figured into the price points of the units. Uh, this is uh the HOA reserve is an unusual concept and one that hmm I think we don't know of any cities that have this concept. We implemented it as part of BMR Phase Two because um typically our BMR units, for-sale units, are priced at higher price points. They usually moderate and above moderate units. But we wanted to flag units that might be at lower income levels and say, yes, the price point figures, the HOA dues, but over time, if they go up might much higher than imagined, the city needs to have some kind of a reserve to be able to um take in applications for assistance and to disperse funds accordingly. So. And that's what the HOA reserve program was intended to do.
Okay, and we did potentially cover a scenario where um uh that we've had locally where um wood trim starts to rot and uh the HOA is responsible for making up the difference on that construction defect and.
You know, um, quite frankly, we have not yet created the program. These are all really good ideas and I would imagine that if it were part of the overall HOA dues requirements, we could build um some of this into it, but we haven't created the program yet. It's um, it was a newly co- a created concept and we really haven't um had units that fit into this category other than one other project. So um I know that over time we'll be developing that and this this would be a point of consideration, Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you for for taking it into consideration. And and I was just um uh wondering like, what is the price point of these units?
Um, I ha- let me just go back to the um FAQs. I know we had provided some. And if you just give me a minute, I will, I will look for the, look for the information. Uh, Mayor, it might take me a little time, so if if you'd like to continue, I will raise my hand when I have to respond.
Okay, sorry about that. Councilmember Lieber, is it okay if we'll come back to your question?
Certainly.
Okay, great. Councilmember Shawalter?
Yeah, I mean, with these projects, one of the things that always upsets the community is the loss of trees. And um I I had a discussion with um Mr. Genardi uh a couple days ago and and brought up the idea of um them planting some uh trees immediately on or or very soon on other speaker properties. This is a unique um situation because the speaker company owns quite a few properties around town. So um uh I I did wonder if Mr. Genardi, did you have a chance to investigate whether um you would be willing to plant some more trees to help that canopy? Um, at least the the community-wide county canopy recover more quickly than if we wait until um the construction happens.
Sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I talked with Todd um about the option you brought up, uh Councilmember Shawalter. And instead of providing it onsite to his his certain properties, we're willing to just donate to, if it's a tree fund, where you guys can plant them in certain parks or whatever it may be, we're willing to contribute uh a dollar amount to that instead of, you know, putting the the burden of planting trees on Todd's properties uh solely on his, we're we're willing to donate the money to the city so they can plant wherever they feel is fit.
Um, we didn't really talk about an amount. Did you have an amount?
Uh, w- we we estimate it's probably between ten fifteen thousand to plant trees on Todd's uh sites. So it would be around that number.
Okay, okay. Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And I'll circle back to Ms. Shavastava. Do we have the answer for Councilmember Lieber? I think I don't see any other colleagues with hands up, so I think we're ready to come back.
Yes, uh, we do. Um, and so I'll give you some examples. For a very low-income um unit at fifty percent AMI, a one-bedroom um uh and affordable um over the household size of two people, the affordable sales price would be uh approximately two hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred. Um, a two-bedroom with a household size of three at that same level would be about three hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred. Um, uh, a unit, a one-bedroom unit at eighty percent AMI with a household size of two would be four hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred. And then um a two-bedroom at eighty percent AMI and a household size of three would be five hundred and thirteen thousand um five hundred dol- um dollars. So that gives you an idea of um the cost of these units.
Great, thank you. All right. So do, does anyone else have any other questions? All right, great. Thank you for that information. We'll move over to um public comment then. Um, and if we could just pull up the uh the two-minute timer. So for any member of the public on the line who'd like to provide public comment, please feel free to raise your hand um or in the Zoom or you can press star nine on your phone. All right. Azucena? Casanova? Azucena, are you there? Hello, hola, Azucena?
Hola.
Hola.
Si, buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Hay algo que te quiere decir or uh al consejo?
Uh, estoy teniendo problemas. Lo puedo escuchar.
Okay.
Escuchan?
Sí.
Nos escuchamos. Okay, buenas noches a todos. A mi nombre es Azucena Castañón. Soy parte del Fondo de Solidaridad de Mountain View. Este estoy muy agradecida, muy agradecida por la confianza y estamos eh plenamente felices de poder servir a la comunidad. Y si alguna pregunta del público, estamos mis compañeras y yo aquí presentes para poder contestar. Gracias. Yes, yes. Y y y eso terminaste y todo fue bueno. So muchisimas gracias por llamando. Si, gracias.
All right, um, were people able to hear the translation with the English? Okay, well, Azucena was calling about the Mountain View Solidarity Fund. Um, she, I think she was having some some trouble um hearing this. Were you able to do the translation there? Yeah, I we can hear you now, but we couldn't, we couldn't hear it simultaneously. Yeah, and hopefully I was able to tell her that we finished that council item um that, but we did pass it, so. Okay, good, good, good. I want to make sure. All right, so we'll move on to our next um public commenter, Emily Anne Ramos.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Good, great. Good evening, Mayor Kamay and members of the council. This is Emily Anne Ramos with SB at Home here to support the residential development at Gamma Way. Now, the city has faced many projects that demolished rent-controlled units and replaced them with a net loss or affordability loss projects in the last few years, but tonight we finally had the tools to create a far better outcomes. We applaud the city council using the street sale of Gamma Way as leverage to focus on the needs of the tenants threatened with displacement. We support the relocation packages that give tenants a number of choices, including the opportunity to purchase one of the new units at a rate affordable to them, receive a forty-two-month rental subsidy, or be placed at a local or similarly priced unit at the landlord's other properties. Providing the rare opportunity of BMR ownership has allowed us to see the barriers that exist when transitioning a renter to a homeowner, for example, down payment, consistent income, credit score, immigration status, HOA fees. In the long term, the council should explore funding sources to bridge these issues. Mountain View once again shows that it's a leader in tackling the region's housing crisis by acknowledging that the crisis of housing insecurity, rent burden, displacement will not be addressed simply by replacing existing homes with new expensive homes, but by following the three Ps: producing more housing by increasing density, preserving affordable housing by requiring a one-for-one replacement of affordability, and protecting tenants by providing a first right of return and strong relocation assistance options. These kind of solutions show how the city can invest in our existing communities without gentrifying, and it shows a path forward now that SB three thirty project, now that, now that SB three thirty will apply to future projects. Developments like these should serve as a model for upcoming council housing initiatives, R-three district zoning update, and housing displacement response strategies. We support this project in solidarity with the current tenants of the prod- of Gamma Way. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Tim McKenzie?
Hi, well, Tim McKenzie, he/him pronouns, uh Monteleone neighborhood. Just I'm one to thank you for being able to get uh tenant protections similar to SB three thirty, even though this project uh technically didn't have to comply with it. So I'd love to see that. Would love to see enhanced tenant protections with all developments moving forward. Uh, looks great and glad to hear that the tenants are on board. Uh, so thanks a lot. Looks great.
Thank you. Isaac Stone?
Hello, uh, good evening. Um, I want to say that I really like this development and I'm happy with all the hard work that that the the staff and the council has been doing to bring some affordability. And I li- I like the court like courtyard plan and I think it'll be a lovely place for people to live. I have a couple of comments. I don't know if staff or anyone has looked into this. Um, but there is a, the the southwest corner of the development is close to an empty lot. Um, and I was wondering if you could look into the possibility of creating a pedestrian path through the south side of the property, working with the nineteen-seventy owners for that little corner and through the empty lot so that the the children going to school at at the elementary school there could walk and not have to deal with that uh Latham and Esquela interchange, which is a very hectic place, especially in the mornings. Um, and I was also wondering if you had looked into at all the possibility of providing some ground floor uh commercials to serve the local res- uh neighborhood. It is one of the densest neighborhoods in Mountain View and has very little uh walkable local grocery or anything like that, and I think it would help with traffic and et cetera if we had some more um local uh shops to serve the community so they don't have to drive everywhere. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, I don't see any more uh public comment. Oh, we have one more. So we'll just reset the the timer. Edi Keating.
Thank you. When I first uh began hearing about and reading the the outcome of this project and the proposal, I wasn't sure if I could support it. Uh, there are two questions I was asking. Is this a good proposal for the community? And is this proposal good for the tenants? And I think I pretty quickly felt this was a good proposal for the community because the uh loss of rent-controlled units was being replaced with uh income-qualified BMR ownership units at quite low levels. And also then the add of uh the market rate units is also good for the community. And then I was concerned that would the tenants uh be able to afford uh the ownership units and they won't all be able to, I suspect, afford the ownership units. It's possible. And there will be good efforts to support them, is what the community has learned uh hearing more about the ownership BMR process, but some won't. And but the other option that was introduced just recently, I believe this evening, allowing the uh three and a half years of the tenants being able to transfer to other apartments and keep their current rent, their current rent-controlled rate without having to, you know, qualify for income and credit worthiness uh to transfer to those others uh apartments is a big gift to the tenants. And the last thing is uh my understanding is that the tenants are satisfied with this. And other conversations this evening, including the uh basic income discussion, say that say that trusting tenants is really important. I do support this project.
Okay, thank you. Gail Sisich?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Well, hello, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council members. I am a 10-plus-year president on Gamma Way, and I will be impacted by this relocation package. And first, I'd like to thank, very much thank, the city staff and the developer for all of the time and effort they put into composing this package, this, I should say, enhanced package of relocation benefits. This is cutting-edge, and we all certainly hope to see more of this in the future. My only concern at this point going forward is not so much the affordability, but the down payment question, which was raised by some of the other members of the public. Most of my neighbors on Gamble are, I would estimate, very low income, and a lot of them have had fairly serious income loss in the last two years. And many of them are still catching up, even with state and federal rent assistance, they're still catching up with paying their bills, other expenses in life. And that's my concern, is the down payment, because even at a 5% or 10% down payment, I imagine a lot of my neighbors do not have that kind of cash just laying around. I don't have that much laying around, and I don't have the same issues that they do. But in any case, thank you again to everyone, and I do support the project, and I hope we can straighten out the few remaining wrinkles. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Kevin Ma?
Evening, council. My name is Kevin Ma. I live basically one block away from the project on Ortega. And I would like to echo the comments of the last two speakers. It is good that the situation at the end has provided a situation where the tenants of the development were able to have a favorable outcome. And I thank the city and the city staff for having the leverage to go ahead with making such demands from the developer. But I would like to make sure that these kind of situations, these kind of very close calls do not happen in the future. Recommend the city make a no-net loss of rent-controlled housing, as well as strengthen Trail as to make sure that people are able, if they are displaced from a product, to be able to stay in the community, because prices still keep going higher, and the economy is still very shaky, especially for, it was shaky before and it's shakier now during COVID. And I believe that the city should make itself to be a welcoming place for everyone, for those who are making not that much, or making too much, or those who haven't been here very long, or people have been here all their lives. So, thank you, council, for this change. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright, I'm not seeing any more hands for public comment, so we can bring it back to council for deliberation and action. And note that a motion to approve the recommendation should include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the report, and that is seven resolutions. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start first by thanking staff for their work on this project. I know it's taken a lot of time, and it's been a challenging project for a variety of reasons, but I think it's ended up in a very good place. And I also want to thank the applicant for working with staff, and most importantly, working with the tenants to come up with solutions that I think have worked well for, or are working well for everybody. And I just want to, I'll go ahead and move the staff recommendation, including, so I'm guessing I have to read all of this, all the seven recommendations are listed all, or just, I'll just do the resolutions, I think those are the ones that actually have to be read. So, adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Mountain View ordering the conditional vacation of Gamma Way as a public street and public easements thereon. And then adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Mountain View declaring the city-owned portion of Gamma Way to be exempt surplus land pursuant to Government Code, Section 54221F1E, upon the vacation of Gamma Way as a public street. Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Mountain View conditionally approving a planned unit development and development review permit for a four-story, 121-unit residential condominium project with a state density bonus and a heritage tree removal permit to remove 12 heritage trees at 1919 to 1945 Gamma Way, 574 Esquela Avenue, and 1970 Latham Ave. And then adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Mountain View conditionally approving a vesting tentative map to create 121 condominiums and one common lot at 1919 to 1945 Gamma Way, 574 Esquela Ave, and 1970 Latham Street, and include the modified conditions that staff had provided in the report. I'll also include the, it sounds like the request that council member Shawalter had made and accept voluntary contribution from the applicant to increase, or to plant trees or increase tree canopy. One, there wasn't a specific figure provided, so I'm guessing unless staff needs one, I'll just leave that up to staff and the applicant to negotiate. And then there was one other modification I wanted to make. And if there isn't council support, that's fine, I'm happy to strip it. But while I think the figure for the HOA reserve in the staff report is pretty significant, at the very least, I would, I think it's important to include direction to staff. We wouldn't make the allocation tonight, but to provide direction to use a portion of the proceeds from the sale of Gamma Way or some other funding source to help the tenants who are currently living on Gamma Way, if they elect to purchase a BMR unit, to help them with that transition. So, city manager McCarthy, I'm hoping you could help me. We talked about this a little bit earlier, so if there's particular language that would be valuable or helpful, I'm open to what that might be. But it's specifically to work with the tenants and the representatives who have been working with them to figure out what that need might be and quantify it, quantify it, and then have, come back to council at a future date with a recommendation for appropriation, then to help with that transition. And that could be, the HOA reserve, I think is particularly important, but if there is some value in exploring down payment assistance, I'm open to that as well, if the council is. So that would be the motion. The only other thing I'll add is, if the previous proposal we saw from the applicant was in exercise in exploring what we would have liked to have seen if we had a different set of regulations, I think this particular project serves as an answer to that question, and hopefully a model or template that we can emulate with future redevelopment proposals where naturally affordable rent-controlled apartments are demolished and tenants displaced. I think this is a great project. I hope that we've learned a lot from it and taken what we've learned in a way that we can apply with either the anti-displacement work or other work that the city's doing. I'm excited to see the relocation assistance and the tenant accommodations package work out. I'm hoping we can transition a number of the residents to ownership, and I'm eager to support the project. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that was a motion for the staff recommendation. Councilmember Shawalter?
I'd like to second that recommendation.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion by the vice mayor, seconded by councilmember Shawalter. Councilwoman Maticek?
Thanks. I was wondering if the maker of the motion would make a couple little tweaks here. And we talked about this for other developments, and had the requirement that at least 75% of the plants be native plants. And we know how important oak trees are. They're scheduled to plant two. If we could do four, that would be great, because I do want variety in the trees. And would you be open to that?
So the 75% I'm comfortable with, I just want to check in with the applicant. The four oak trees, is that acceptable, feasible?
Yeah, so we looked into it with our landscape architects, and we'll be able to accommodate the four oaks.
I'm happy to include those recommendations.
Thanks. And then I do feel like I need a little bit more clarity on the, what you're proposing in terms of the Gamma Way proceeds. Thanks.
Sure. So just to clarify, I'm not proposing an allocation tonight. I think the staff report includes a fairly large figure if you wanted to provide the HOA reserve under the BMR Phase II provisions. And I'm not suggesting that we do that. I think it would be helpful, though, to do some informal check-in with the tenants and their representatives to see how many of them are interested in purchasing a BMR unit, and then working with them to see if any additional assistance is needed, quantify that, and then to come back to council to seek an appropriation. I think that would probably come out of the proceeds of the sale of Gamma Way, but staff may have an alternative source that they would recommend instead.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. City manager McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Vice Mayor Ramirez just restated what I was going to clarify. But I do want to find out whether that's part of his motion as well.
So now you've confused me. So is that, is the request to, or the clarification that staff would come back to council for the appropriation? Yes, yeah, I'm not, I don't want to do that tonight. I'm not prepared to provide a number. So it would be for staff to come back.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
So another friendly amendment, along with the increased native landscaping, I think a great deal of the courtyard is plastic turf, which is not a very sustainable material, needing watering to not get too hot, and also needing to be replaced on a regular basis. I'm hoping that that can be substituted for some more native surfacing.
That sounds reasonable to me, just checking in with the applicant. Is that a request you can accommodate?
Councilmember Hicks, what did you have in mind for more native?
I am not, I am not a landscape architect. I would refer to the, although I wish I was. I would, I would refer to a landscape architect to, you know, something that's being used in other similar properties.
Could I help respond to that, Bill Maston?
Sure.
Keep in mind that the central courtyard is being built on top of a podium with parking directly below it. And we had actually been given a direction by staff to provide as much usable play area as possible. And so that was what led us in that direction. So if we were to remove this synthetic turf and replace it with something else, we would still like it to be a usable surface by those people that are living there, not just a raised planter, which wouldn't allow children to run around or anything of that nature. So that was the logic behind it, just so that we're aware.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I would even amend it to just exploring that with other, you know, what, exploring that option. I think there are other options available, but I certainly could not suggest them.
Yeah, just to chime in, yeah, we're comfortable exploring it with staff and seeing if there's other, any other suitable options.
Thank you. So is that amendment added to your motion, Vice Mayor? And that's okay with the seconder?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. City manager McCarthy, your hand's still up. Would you, is there anything else to add? Okay, perfect. Alright, I want to make sure. Alright, so, let's see. The Vice Mayor put forward the staff recommendation, which was seconded by councilmember Shawalter, but that has also been amended to include 75% native plants, four oak trees, and looking into, I'm sorry, was it pavement?
Looking into, to natural landscaping rather than the plastic surfacing for the courtyard.
Okay, natural surfacing versus plastic. Okay, that is the whole motion. Does staff have that? Did we get that right? Does staff need more in terms of what the motion is?
No, but I did want to clarify one additional item, which I think city manager Kimber McCarthy wanted to clarify, that staff was also to look at options for either through the SPAR or other funding to help transition the tenants to purchase units and then come back to council with an appropriation to allocate the funds.
Yes, so, so the, I think it was checking in with the current tenants to see if if there's any additional assistance that would be necessary to facilitate that transition. And I'm thinking in particular the HOA reserve, and then down payment assistance to the degree necessary and feasible. So that could be the Gamma Way proceeds or some other funding source as deemed appropriate by staff.
So Mayor, we've added that to the language in the motion in my notes.
Okay, so where would that be like an, there's?
That would be just in addition to the seven items, that's a future bring-back item. So it'd just be an additional request for staff to complete that.
Okay. Okay. Do we need anything else, then? Is this the final motion? Alright, okay. So is there any other questions, clarifications, comments? Alright, okay. I think we're ready for a roll call vote, then.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Councilmember Abi Koga?
I.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber? Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
And Mayor Kamay?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, alright. Thanks, everyone. That concludes item 7.1. So we'll move on to item eight, which are council staff committee reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Councilmember Hicks?
I'm just gonna, I'm a representative or observer of the Avenida Senior Services, and I haven't updated council or the public on their services for quite some time. So I wanted to report that they've, they've been moving successfully, as is often difficult for seniors successfully to providing a lot of online services, you know, teaching people how to use Zoom and so forth. And that they're now attempting to have a grand reopening. It's been a little delayed because of the Delta variant, but they're hoping to move to hybrid services and be able to hopefully come out of the pandemic offering even more than before to our senior citizens. They also have a new program director, Nancy Keegan, who's experienced in the field, and that's my update.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. At our last MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission meeting, we approved $200,000 from OBagG2 Funds for the Mountain View Transit Center to provide placemaking technical assistance. I think we're going to be talking about the pedestrian part, accessibility piece to that, so this funding should be going to that project. So I was excited to be able to support that. And then for reporting purposes, I did attend And then for reporting purposes, I did attend the CalCities, which was formerly the League of California Cities. They've changed their name to CalCities. Their conference last week was, I wanted to congratulate our mayor for being elected the president of the Women's Caucus. I also attended a couple of interesting workshops, one on zero-emission vehicles. There's a lot going on in that area right now. I know we've been working on electric charging stations, and that's really definitely a big component of it, but there is quite a bit of funding coming down, and so there's, yeah, lots of opportunity. And then I attended another workshop that was really interesting. It talked about retail after COVID, what retail would look like. And contrary to, I guess even my assumptions that, you know, retail brick and mortar is going away, this workshop, the folks on this panel said that it's in fact still around, staying around, it just will be in different forms. So I thought that was interesting, and what, basically, there's a lot more of the, you know, pick-up, order online, pick-up at your local store type of retail. And so that may actually impact some of our permitting and zoning requirements. So I just thought it was very interesting and kind of bucked the myth, I guess, that retail is going away. So that was it, thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Madacek?
I just want to report that I participated in the Santa Clara County Airport Menus Commission meeting, and I always appreciate it that when Mountain View products, projects go before that commission, our staff shows up. Unfortunately, I never get to participate in those because I recuse myself, because those are going to come to the Mountain View Council, but I appreciate staff attending those. And then I also participated in the Bosca Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency Board Meeting, and we always get an update on the water situation, and it's complicated. But clearly, we want to continue to encourage people to conserve water because it's certainly a dry year, and it's not looking like it's going to get any wetter. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So there's no one else. I'll also report that I attended the CalCities Conference last week. And in addition to being the Women's Caucus, I'll be on the Peninsula Division Executive Committee. So looking forward to continuing to serve our area. All right, so I think this concludes item eight, so we'll move on to item nine, which is our closed session report. City Attorney Chopra, do you have a closed session report?
There's no closed session report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item ten, which is adjournment. Thank you so much for joining us, and our next regular city council meeting will be on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Until then, stay healthy. Make sure you're registered to vote. It's National Voter Registration Day. And the meeting is adjourned at ten thirty-four PM. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.